Okay, we're good. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for August 13th, 2020. We're meeting virtually, as you know, because you're connected through your computer or phone instead of sitting in city hall. And we're going to do that, I guess, until further notice. So let's get started with a call to order and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. There any sunshine announcements?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk. This meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bayer Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. And I had shared the sunshine announcement with Bridget beforehand, so we can mark this for the record.
A1.
Thank you. And I just want to announce that the Jersey City Master Plan Vision has launched. Please visit the website, http.
How come they can't see me? Whoops.
Chat, I don't know. So you can, you can visit the, the master plan vision at http, https, colon, slash, slash, forward slash, forward slash, our, O U R J C dash jerseycity dot hub dot A R C G I S dot com, forward slash, for more information and help us shape Jersey City's future by filling out the survey.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess there is a shorter way to get to the website. It's just B C N J dot work slash our J C. So O U R J C and it'll take you to that, that longer hyperlink. And that's where the surveys are, our social media pages, which you could follow at that on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram at J C Master Plan. And on the website, like the chairman said, there, there are surveys, there's an envisioning survey, and neighborhood survey, and an open space and park survey. So we're rewriting our land use element and our open space and recreation element. So we want to help residents and other stakeholders to help shape those plans. So please check out the website and take those surveys.
Everybody fill it out. Just go to the website and then all your friends, everyone in your building, just send it to them. And then all of you have a stake in these surveys.
Yes, and I'm going to put the link in the, in the chat so everyone can see.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we please take roll call?
Right, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Jamie?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner McCormick? You're on mute, Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Shabib?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
We had seven presenters.
Thank you. Can we swear in staff, please?
Okay, raise your right hands to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence?
The only thing is case for the address located at 91 to 93 Patterson Street is being carried to a date certain with notices preserved, carried to our special meeting, August 27th, with notices preserved. All the other cases are going forward and I'll put the, I'll also put the agenda back as well.
Okay, so what you're saying is the application with address 91 dash 93 Patterson Street, correct?
Yes.
Is not going forward today. So if you're here for that application, it's not going to go forward today. We're going to, you're going to come back another time. And Lindsay, how will they know when, when that will be?
So you just keep up to date by checking the city planning website. We post the agendas once they're available. You can also call or email us just to stay in the loop. But if the plans substantially change before the next hearing, they'll be required to send out a notice again. But as of right now, they don't need to do so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to proceed with today's business. The first case is case Z 20 dash 053. The address is 360 Ogden Avenue.
Falcon, start my video. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your being here tonight. I look forward to seeing all of you regularly on Zoom. We have a relatively minor application to put before you. 360 Ogden Avenue is a residential building. It is three stories high with a basement. The application is simply to seek two C variances. It could be either C one or C two variances in all cases. There's no minor site plan, there's no major site plan. The amount of square footage that is being added is 887 square feet. This is simply an enclosure of decks and an extension of a couple of decks. I have just one witness and I'd like to bring him in. Actually, there's two witnesses, but one will introduce the other. So the first one is Dwayne Dancy.
Gene, before we start.
This is a notice case.
Yes, Gene, before we start, let's mark your notices. We've reviewed them, your affidavit and your proof of service, your notice of publication. So Bridget will mark that as A1.
A1 in evidence.
Thank you.
And Gene, you know, since we're doing this remotely, you will agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
I will do that.
Okay, great. So the floor is yours.
One more thing. We have spoken with a, not the regular planning staff. We've discussed this with David Spatz, who's been brought in to review this file for obvious reasons that you'll hear about later. So having said that, I'd ask Dwayne Dancy and Kirk Mitchell to come forward.
Everyone.
Okay, Mr., would you raise your right hands to be sworn?
Mr. Dancy first, Mr. Dancy.
Okay, Mr. Dancy, raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, my first name is Dwayne, D W A Y N E. My last name is Dancy, D A N C Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Dancy, you're a licensed architect, is that correct?
Correct, I am.
Could you give the board the benefit of your background?
Um, yes, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, South Carolina, Massachusetts. I've been doing architecture for about 16, 17 years. I have a degree in advanced architectural design from Columbia University and a bachelor of architecture from Howard University.
I offer Mr.
We accept your qualifications.
I'm so sorry, I missed.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
I offered Mr. Dancy to qualify expert. Did you not hear that? You did? Okay, good.
Yes, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dancy, did you work on the architectural plans for this project?
Kirk and I are partners and he was the design lead on this. So for the design, I would like to defer to him on the project.
Good. And you will review these, these plans and you sign and seal them, is that right?
Every step of the way, yes.
Right. So I would ask that Mr. Mitchell be brought forward as a witness, as a person most familiar with the plans and the person most able to explain the plans to the board. Mr. Mitchell?
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
It's Kirk, K I R K, Mitchell, M I T, C H E L L.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, you're educated as an architect, is that correct?
I am. I have a bachelor's of architecture from Howard University and a master's in science and architecture at Carnegie Mellon University. And you work with Mr. Dancy? Yes, we're partners and we've been practicing almost 20 years now.
And you worked on these plans for the applicant?
Yes, I have.
Okay, you're very familiar with the plans, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Mitchell will describe the, the application for the board, if that's okay with the board, with the board chairman.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen now. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
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 Okay, great.
Mitchell, I just want you, the first thing I want you to do is just simply orient all of us.
Yes, absolutely.
Where the property is and what zone it's in.
Absolutely. So this is 360 Ogden Avenue in Jersey City Heights on the Palisades. It's located in R1, 1-2 Family Housing District. It's located on a undersized lot, which is 17 feet by approximately 65 feet, which is a total of 1,107 square feet. And in the R1 district, the minimum lot size is 2,500 square feet. So.
My question's away from you. I was going to ask you what your, what the, what the regular lot size is. It's 2,500 square feet. So this is about 44% of a regular sized lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Mitchell, would you take us through the proposed designs for the levels of this building? I understand it's a basement level and there are two stories above it, is that correct?
It's a basement and three stories above.
Should be three stories above.
No problem.
Would you take us through it? Take us through the basement, first floor, the second floor, and third floor?
Absolutely. To give a better understanding, I'm going to take you through demolition plans first, just to better explain the changes that are going, that we're proposing to make. On the top of your screen is the existing floor plan. And what we, right now, the, the building itself is about, about five foot, sorry, five foot four from the rear property line. It has a deck that's about three foot 10. What we're looking to do is cover and enclose the existing rear deck. And this would be the extent of our extension on the ground floor, which means that we wouldn't be covering any more lot coverage, just building coverage. Going up to the first floor, we're also going to be doing an extension. There's an existing deck there, which I'll show in post that we're going to extend as well over the new roof of the basement floor. On the second floor, which is on the top of your screen, we're also doing an extension, so you'll see that there's some minor demolition work on the interior as well as the rear wall and rear deck. And on the very top floor, which has some slope, we're going to be doing minor interior demolition and also doing a rear extension. Now, these are color-coded proposed floor plans to better explain the extensions that we're proposing to add to the building. On the top page is the proposed basement floor. And the yellow signifies the additional interior square footage that we're proposing to add to the building.
That's about, is that about 85 square feet?
That is correct.
And that brings you no closer to the property line than the building, than the, than the deck is today, is that right?
That's correct. And I'm sorry, I just, it's 65 square feet, not 85.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so we're not adding any more lot coverage. We're just enclosing the existing rear deck that's there now.
Okay.
On the bottom of the sheet, which is the proposed first floor plan, again, the yellow signifies the rear extension that we're looking to add to the back of this house. And there is already an existing deck there that we would now be extending over the roof of the basement, the proposed basement addition. So if you noticed between the first drawing and the second drawing, that the red square and the yellow square line up. And the red signifies additional deck space.
And the rest of the, the deck space would be, would be.
Existing. Yeah, no, so this, all of this is open deck space and the only enclosed space is in the yellow.
So a portion of the, of the existing deck space would be enclosed.
That is correct.
And you're going to add on to the existing deck space?
That is correct.
To make it, to make it align in the same plane as the basement below, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, go to the next floor.
So on the next page is, on the top of the sheet, is the second, the proposed second floor plan, and that you see in yellow. We're proposing to add 316 square feet of rear addition to the back, which most of it would be enclosing an existing deck. And then the, the red space is the proposed additional rear deck. And we're doing the exact same proposed addition on the third floor of 316 square feet to the existing rear of the building. And then we're going to add another five foot rear deck that is delineated in the red square.
Okay, so let's go down to the basement once more. And in the basement, the, the, the requirement under the LVO, the Land Development Ordinance, is that you have a 20-foot setback from the rear yard, from the rear, for the rear yard, is that correct?
Yes.
Existing, there is about a, what to the deck, it's about, what, one foot nine inches to the deck?
It's one foot nine on one side and two foot six on the other, and that's because the lot line is not straight.
Okay. And the existing building, the proposed building will be no greater than that as you proposed?
That's correct.
Okay, and did you plan to do anything else with respect to the flooring on the basement?
Yes. The client would like to propose to drop the floor in the great room. So the great room is the rear room, the basement floor, which I'm showing with the cursor now. And to get additional ceiling height, because the ceiling height is pretty low on that, or to drop it two steps, which would be 14 inches in total. And I'll show that better.
One speaker.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say I can, I have a, a building section that better shows that.
Show us that.
Okay. So here is the portion of the existing basement floor that we're looking to lower by 14 inches.
My understanding is you want the option to be able to do that, is that correct?
Yes, we want the option contingent, of course, upon the cost of construction.
Okay. And the, 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 the stories above the basement, the three stories above the basement, they are, as you described them here, no greater, no closer to the property line than the basement floor, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's, that's, that's one C variance that we requested. The second C variance is building coverage. Is building coverage any different with the deck included existing?
No, it's not. Building coverage, we are, yes, building coverage is, lot coverage is not.
Okay. So we're, we're, our coverage of the, of the, of the lot is the same as it exists. We are, of course, going to be one foot nine inches from the property line. And that's, is that, have any, does the size of the lot have any effect on that proximity?
It does, because it's such a narrow lot, only 17 feet, and it's a shallow lot, only 65 feet. It's difficult to expand the livable square footage of the house. So the only way to go is either up or back. And we chose it was easier to go back since we already have the structure underneath the house to go back as opposed to going up.
There are three other variances. I've described them as variances that are emanate from the two variances that I previously described. The, the rear yard setback and the building coverage setback, the building coverage issue. Those three variances relate to 345, 6S, 6V, 6A2, and 60C1. Excuse me, 345 dash 60V, 345 dash 682, and 345 60C1. They are all related to the, either the building coverage or the, the rear yard issue, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any indication of what the neighborhood is like? Any, any photos of the neighborhood?
Yes, here's a photo from the back from Patterson Plank Road. And home that's highlighted with the hashed black line is 360 Ogden, our proposed project site. And you'll notice that the building to south, which is our left, that our rear deck now lines up with their rear deck and retaining wall with the mural on it.
Okay, so it's in keeping with, with that building as well as the, the, the prior separation in building coverage or lot coverage that you had before?
That is correct.
That's all I have for this witness. I can, there is no engineer involved because this is a relatively minor application. Actually, very often applicants come in on their own and do this kind of an application, but I've been chosen to be that one here. Let me also point out that the, the requirements, that both the requirements of the topography, narrowness, and shallowness of the property necessitate a C1 variance. We've, we've lost about 32 feet of a, of a normal 2,500 square foot lot. The other application satisfies both the negative and positive criteria in that the deviation from the Land Development Ordinance requirements would not undermine the municipal land use law or the master plan and would not be a substantial detriment to the public good and the benefits of the variance substantially outweigh any detriment. So on that basis, I offer this application to approve. I have no other witnesses.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think you, Mr. Pallino, you might have addressed what I was going to ask you. Would this be, I assume, because, so I had two questions. One, based on its location, it doesn't look like it from, from the renderings, you know, that we went through or this, this picture. But I know that we're careful on the Palisade. Is there any reason why, you know, sometimes I know certain applications we've gotten in this part of the city? We've heard from engineers that have talked about, we're doing this on it. It, it doesn't have an impact on the Palisade for these particular reasons. You know, was there any, any consideration given or can, I'm sure you can provide a good answer.
Yes, let me, let me, can I, can I respond to that quickly?
Yeah.
Yes, the, we were concerned initially, I was concerned initially about whether or not the Palisades, the Peapod District would have a, have an issue here. It does not, it's not involved. The structural, the cross beams you see on the photo, for instance, I don't believe they're changed. They do not impinge on any Palisades issues. So I don't think, we don't believe both, I don't want to speak for the architect, but I believe if you ask the architect, he would tell you that he doesn't believe that this causes any other problem with the Palisades other than what's generally there for all of the, all of the residential properties in the area.
Okay, and then I know we're going to hear from the planner that reviewed this. Again, it, there's, there's no real change to, you know, what, what's there other than, than extending the structure at all. But I, I assume that there's no reason here that, that you need some type of planning testimony because it's not impacting the height or density.
No, there is one thing that, that I should have Mr. Mitchell, if he's still available.
I am.
Speak to, which I forgot. And that is Kirk, would you just describe what you're doing with the flattening of the roof on the back? That's not, that doesn't add anything, it just is a change in design.
Yes. So right now, you notice from this picture, we have a, like a gable and a shed roof. And what we're looking to do is flatten it in order to utilize the, the ceiling height of new extension. And you'll see that here, the existing part of that roof that we'd be demolishing in order to utilize this ceiling height.
That ceiling height as well, that, that brings the building height no greater than what's permitted, is that right?
And that's, that's correct. And you can see.
What's already there.
That's correct. Here is a diagram of our elevations, either two front elevations, two rear elevations. This is the existing elevation of the demo. And this is the proposed, and you'll see that the, the height is not increased, it's the exact same, we're just flattening out the.
I hope that answers your questions, Chairman.
Yes, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, just a quick one.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Pallino, just was, anything discussed with the neighborhood or outside? I think I just heard you say the Peapod or the Palisade initiatives or whatever. Was anything else asked of the neighbors or how did the neighbors respond at all, if any?
My understanding is the, the neighborhood had no objection to the proposal here. I did not personally speak with anybody in the neighborhood, but I believe that others have. But I, there's no objection as far as I know from anyone in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
This is a relatively minor application I would suggest to the board. It is not a considerable amount of building and it's done within the context of a very tight space. So I would ask the board's indulgence if that's necessary.
Are there any questions or comments from the public at this point? Lindsay, are you seeing any hands? We'll give people 30 seconds.
I don't see any hands, but you know, as always, just to make it clear how you would provide a comment. If you're on the phone, you would dial star nine, raise your hand. And if you're on a computer or laptop, you would go to the bottom of your screen and click raise hand. And that's how you'd be able to provide a comment. But with that, Chairman, I don't see any raised hands.
Motion to close public portion.
Okay, we'll, we'll close the public portion of the application. Are there any staff comments on this application?
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Spatz here.
Yes.
He has reviewed this. I think we should swear him in and.
Yes.
Just for the record, we have used him in the past and we've recognized him as an expert. He is a principal planner and he's reviewed these plans and let him just go through his report. He's got to report in to the board.
Correct.
Even, how are you?
Very good, thanks.
Okay, raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Certainly, David Spatz, S P A T Z.
Thank you.
Good evening. We reviewed the current submission. We were involved.
We were involved in the prior submission for other work done on this property several years ago when site plan approval was granted and a series of variances. The current submission increases two of those variances. So that's what you would need to be granted, and that's rear yard, a variance was granted. This increases that condition and then maximum building coverage. Likewise, a variance was granted the last time and this increases that coverage because of the enclosure of what was an open porch. The other variances that were described, we concur with. We have several questions that have primarily been addressed this evening regarding any changes to existing conditions. And there was testimony that nothing is being changed as it affects the site in particular, just changes to the building. We noted that lots in direct proximity to this property are similarly undersized. Those residences are developed to the lot lines in a similar matter, especially the dwelling on the adjacent lot ten. So what's being done here is consistent with the neighborhood. There are no additional rooms being created as a result of the improvement and therefore really no increase in the intensity of the use on the property. There is no increase in parking demand, even though parking is not required, given the size of the property. As was just described, the roof of the building is being squared off to give some increased overall ceiling height to the three bedrooms and the bathroom on the third floor. But the maximum ceiling height is not being increased. There's some existing attic space that's being eliminated, but the building itself still is conforming. There was a good description of what is being done to the building itself. The photo that was provided discusses the materials and also shows how the decks and the the projection into the rear yard is consistent with the neighborhood development pattern. And that really concludes our comments. The variances are really just extensions of what was granted already, and we do not have anything in additional. If there are any questions from the board or from the public, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Mr. Spatz? Okay, I guess there's there's no questions. Does anyone want to make a motion on this application?
Make a motion on Z twenty dash zero five three for approval. A second.
Roll call. Commissioner Brown. Be aware, I can't see everyone, but if you're on mute, be aware of that. Commissioner Mitchell?
Mitchell, mute please. Ask Mitchell again, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Jamie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Uh, let me see here. I have some doubts, but no, I'm gonna go yes, strong yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries on in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, David, again. Thank you.
Very good. Good night. Thank you. Good luck.
So with that, we're we're gonna proceed with case Z nineteen dash one zero eight. The address is two twenty-six Bay Street.
Duck, how are you?
Good, how are you? How are you?
Good. Before you start, let's mark your notices. I think we did that already, did we not? No.
Well, we re-noticed here.
You re-noticed, yeah. I do have it in front of me. So we have your affidavit, your proof of publication. You have it as well. Let's mark it as A one in evidence.
And that'll be A one in evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Again, you you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
So as the board may recall, we were we were before the board back on May twenty-first with an application for a five-story building, four units and some ground ground floor parking. So and there were some concerns primarily about the height of the building and the parking associated with the building and then how it may affect the adjacent property at two twenty-four Bay Street specifically. And and to further kind of flush this out with the community. So since that time, my client has presented to the Harpsmith Cove Association again. And the the result of that and a number of discussions with some of the neighbors, specifically the neighbor at two twenty-four Bay Street, is the project set that is being presented to you tonight. So the differences is, I'll just highlight them. And and Mr. Lewis is gonna walk you through the revised plan. We have eliminated one story, so it is now a four-story building. It is a use variance before, still, it still continues to be a use variance because it's not technically a townhouse. But townhouses are permitted to have up to four units. So it's a four-story building, four units. We are asking for a a minor height variance of three feet, three point seven five feet. That is a C variance for the height. We are only now providing for a partial basement. The idea there is to try to protect the the foundation of two twenty-four Bay Street. And my client has been in discussions with their structural engineer as well, so we're trying to coordinate our efforts with that in that regard. We're also providing, at the ground floor on that side, we're of the project, we're moving the building off the property line by one foot. And we will be providing an easement to the neighbor, two twenty-four Bay Street, so that they can use that to facilitate their access ingress and egress to the backyard and to the back house. If if you may recall, that that side yard was around three feet, maybe a little under. So there was concern whether or not they could get to the back house with furniture and things like that. There's also been a commitment that there'll be no pile driving. It is anticipated from the Geotech report that my client just recently received that it'll be typical spread foundations. So I think that alleviates a lot of concerns. And with the elimination of all the parking, we've created a lot of green space now in the backyard. You have a pretty substantial backyard, about almost five hundred square feet. We've also made a commitment to the to the neighbor that any event, there's a sewer line that that runs along the property lines. So any event during construction, it's found that that needs to be moved. My client would move that at their cost. So there there has been a lot of, you know, you know, changes, a lot of coordination. There's also, there's, I kind of get ahead of this, there was a a letter sent in by the neighbors engineer that I don't know if the board has seen yet, but there are some conclusions that we didn't necessarily agree with, but the intent and the spirit of it, we we did. So I wanted to just confirm on the record that my client has has agreed to share prior to construction, share the Geotech and structural engineering plans with with the owner of two twenty-four Bay Street. Continue to have an open line of communication to ensure that these, the sewer line is is not affected during construction. And prior to construction, we discussed the methods of of any underpinning for the for the adjacent buildings, the front house and the back house with with their engineer. And that, so those those are things that we intend to to continue the coordination. Any event this is approved tonight. So we've made made a lot of progress. We, you know, we hope that, you know, the revised, we we heard the comments of the board and of the neighbors, and we were hoping that this this revised project now is, we believe, we believe is appropriate. We hope that the board does as well. So I'm going to have Mr. Lewis then take you through the revised project. Mr. Height is here tonight, but he did testify with regard to all the variances at the last hearing. So unless the board wants to hear from him on any particular variance, you know, I'll defer to the testimony that we provided at the last hearing because it it'll, it's all the same. The only difference is we're not asking for the height variance for the fifth story any anymore. We still are asking for the 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 use variance, which kind of is an umbrella for the for the bulk variances that are associated with it. But I'll I'll defer to the chairman and the rest of the board if they want to hear from Mr. Height at a later time. So that, with that said, let me move on to Mr. Lewis and then you can see the new project.
Can I raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you state and spell your full legal name for the record?
Yes, Jeffrey Lewis, J.E.F.F.R.E.Y.L.E.W.I.F.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
And Mr. Lewis has been qualified in the past before this board. I ask that he be accepted as well.
Yes, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna start with my screen sharing here and get right to it. And I'm gonna try my best to focus on what has changed and skip over the rest or breeze over the rest, at the very least. So what we are talking about is a twenty-five by one hundred lot on Bay Street. It's located between Erie and Manila, about a block away from Newark Avenue. We're in the R two. And we're proposing a new four-story, four-unit building. Looking at the site plans, we can see some of the things that we're proposing differently. First is the rear yard where this was originally permeable pavers that you could park on. This is now almost entirely grass. There are two four-by-seven little basically landings outside of the two doors that are coming from the first floor apartment that we'll be able to see when we go through the floor plan. But overall, it's about five hundred square feet of lawn area. The second is the one-foot easement that we are leaving along the entire side of the property here. And that's that would be paved to match what's next to it. I'm not sorry, not paved, it would be concrete to match what's next to it, the alley next to it. And then you can also see the garage is gone, so the curb cut's gone. We are still proposing in the front yard to remove the existing tree and plant a new tree. Moving on to the floor plans, I'm gonna skip through some of these. Okay, so let's start with the cellar. And we mentioned two-two-four, which is the building next to us. You can see it here. And it's about, it's a little less than three feet off of the property line. And it ends about here, dragging that line down. And so you can see this whole section of basement, which is about ten feet off of our property line and actually extends another ten feet back, probably the step behind her building. That whole section is going to be a slab-on-grade with no basement, so to minimize the impact on her building. The rest of the basement will be a full basement. It's mostly utilities. It has our sprinkler room because this will be a fully sprinkled building. One stair and the elevator come down to this room. We have a bike storage room, a trash and recycling room, a small closet that's for the HAC for the first floor unit and then four for storage spaces, one for each unit. The first floor is also changed again because it was originally parking. We do have two stairs and an elevator and a hallway connecting them all. Besides that, most of the square footage here is used for the two-bedroom, two-bath unit that's located on the first floor. This unit is one thousand one hundred and sixty-five square feet. The amenities are the same as they were before, stack washer dryer, excuse me, a master suite. And you could see sliding glass doors off the rear from both, from two of the bedrooms, from the two bedrooms off to the rear yard. The upper floors, we're showing the second, third and fourth floor plans here. Actually, these are all exactly the same. And they haven't changed from the original plan. Living space in the front, some utility space and a half bath in the center, three bedrooms, two baths, including a master suite with a balcony in the rear. The rooftop also has remained relatively the same with both stairs, elevator and a small elevator lobby on the rooftop. Just to get it on the record, we have a deck area of one thousand seventy-six square feet on this roof. And then the green roof trays that are bordering the roof are a total of two hundred and eighteen square feet. Going to the elevations, again, we're going with the exact same style in the front of the building, just one foot shorter. These front doors are exactly the same, wood doors with glass panels. The change is orig-, you know, obviously, we had a garage door here. That garage door has been replaced with two windows that are the same as the windows above. These are all, you know, historic windows painted green, double-hung, cast stone, sills and lintels. Red brick on the top is the same and the cornice is the same. On the rear of the building, we're doing stucco finish. It'll be a hard-coated stucco with all and everything else is a black, black finishes for the windows, for the aluminum railings, for the doors. Moving to the side, just to show, we do have a hard-coated stucco on the side as well. With the exception of the very front of the building, we are doing a brick return for the first six feet on the upper floors of the building. And that's the case for this, which is the right side elevation, and this, which is the left side elevation. And that really summarizes the changes we've made to the building and what we're proposing. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And then, does anyone from from the board, A, have any questions for Mr. Lewis? Or also, does anyone from the board want to hear any of the planning testimony with the understanding that we've already heard it?
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
I I'm looking at the resolution you want to memorialize tonight. You do state in there that Mr. Height testified. Just in case this is, we need to make a record here. Why don't you just have Mr. Height come in and just briefly put put an analysis on the record that might might preserve this entire record, don't you think?
Okay, Mr. Height, can you give a brief summary of, you know, kind of a bullet point of what you testified to at the last hearing, incorporating it by reference?
Hey, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name.
Charles Heyd, last name spelled H.E.Y.D.T.
And Mr. Height's been qualified in the past and I'd offer him again as an expert.
Yes, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
And and Mr. Height, just for the record, you did testify as to the requested variances at the May twenty-first hearing. Is that correct?
I did.
Okay, and has your testimony changed at all tonight as opposed to what you testified to on May twenty-first?
No, I think the only change would be the decrease of the building height that's being proposed. Previously, it was a D six height variance. And in this case, removing that fifth story reduces that to a bulk variance. So the benefits of what's being proposed, the additional two feet and and a few inches provides for the appropriate number of stories as well as the appropriate floor-to-ceiling height. So I think the benefits in that case would outweigh the detriments. Four stories is contemplated in in the district, so I don't think there's any substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. And I, given that it's just an additional two feet, all the other rooftop structures comply with zoning, so there's no impact to adjacent properties in terms of of building mass or anything like that. So I don't see any any detriment to public welfare. That would be the only additional I'd I'd offer. I think all the variances that I testified to last time still remain. And there's been no substantial changes to the neighborhood since then.
So
Mr. Height, last time you you testified that the subject property is particularly well-suited to accommodate this project. to accommodate this project, that's your testimony tonight as well, correct?
Yes, given it's technically a multifamily use, very consistent with the parameters of a townhouse, but by definition, we do need a use variance. I do find that the lot is very suitable for the proposed four units, which is a multifamily use, given that it generally is in keeping with four stories. And we did make modifications to the facade that are more in keeping now with the surrounding areas in terms of brick as opposed to the prior facade.
Mr. Height, for the record, is it fair to say that your reasoning and conclusions that you set forth on May 21st equally apply to the projects that is being presented tonight to the board?
Yeah, the property hasn't changed. I still think it's particularly suitable to accommodate what's being proposed. And I don't see any sort of substantial detriment to the public welfare or impairment of the zone plan as I previously testified to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that unless the board has any other questions, I think that should be sufficient for our planning testimony.
I have a question for Mr. Lewis.
Sure.
Okay, great. Mr. Lewis, can you talk a little bit about the decision to remove the mature tree in the front and is the plan to replace it with a mature tree or a little, I don't know what you call it?
Yes, yes, very much. The tree that's existing in the front is not a great tree. Really, it's that the client thinks it's an inferior tree. It doesn't bloom in the summer. It's very cut up, there's a lot of branches cut off of it. We, again, the person who's building this building is living here. He wants to have a nice tree in front. We will work with the forestry department to put something that's, at the very least, comparable with the tree that's existing.
Thank you.
We're trying to do better here. Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Harrington. To my understanding, there was a letter.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jamie, can you, it's very hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better.
Mr. Harrington, to my understanding, you know, there was a letter from the neighbor proposing whatever content is on that letter. I don't know what the content is. To my understanding, your client is into an agreement to whatever is on that letter?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the letter I was referring to earlier. It is dated August 13th, 2020, from Safwat Tadros, their engineer. So we don't agree to everything within the letter because there were some conclusions that he made and assumptions that we made that we don't necessarily agree with. But what we do agree with is that the items that I mentioned earlier, prior to construction, we agree to share the geotech plans and structural engineering plans with them. Then that way, Mr. Tadros can review it with his client. We'll continue to open, keep an open line of communication with regard to the sewer line. His letter references a water line. Our understanding is there is no water line there. And any event that needs to be moved, it would be moved by my client at their cost. Also, we agree that we will discuss the methods of adequately shoring up any underpinning methods with the neighbor's engineer. I think those are the other, most of the things we're agreed with. There's some other items that we just, you know, with regard to getting letters from our structural engineer as to making good faith efforts that they'll shore up or protect the property. That, I think that's basically understood, that any professional's going to have to do that, but we're not there yet, you know? So we really can't provide those letters. And there was also a provision that we would provide documentation that would have to be essentially approved by the neighbor before we could start construction. With all due respect, we can't agree to that if the building department is okay with it. And we are going to consult with them, but we, you know, we'll defer to the building department that it's adequate, you know, adequate protections. And we're also going to pay, you know, we're going to have an independent property survey so that, meaning that of the house, of the structures, so that prior to construction, we can survey the existing conditions of their property so that we have a baseline point of comparison in the event anything happens during construction.
Thanks. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, we're going to open this up to the public. Lindsay, are there any other, any questions or comments from the public? It looks like at least one hand is raised. And I don't know if you want to announce again how people can call in?
Yeah, no problem. So if you are looking to make a comment, first thing you have, you have three minutes to provide your questions or comments. If you do have a question or comment, please click raise hand. If you're on a computer or a laptop, you go to the bottom of your screen and click raise hand. If you're calling in, dial star nine and it'll show up on our screen that you want to make a comment. So with that, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, and Commissioner Rothman, do you want to explain to people how you're going to communicate to them their timing? Chat, you're on mute. Still on mute.
There we go.
There you go.
Yes, the clock will start when you start speaking after you are sworn in and give your information to Ms. Sigmund. At two minutes and 30 seconds, I will say there's 30 seconds left. If you are finishing and already started a thought at three minutes, we will let it run, but no new thought will be started after three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, when I unmute you, when I go down the line, please state and spell your full name and provide your address. Going down the line with 224 Bay Street, I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Can you hear me? Hello? Okay, great. Okay, my name is Stefania McCall, that's S as in Sam, T E F as in Frank, A N as in Nickel, I A. My last name McCall, M as in Michael, C C A L L. The address is 224 Bay Street.
And Ms. McCall, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so since the last planning board meeting, 226 has worked to negotiate and address issues surrounding the project with not only ourselves, but our various neighbors. In the plan presented tonight, they've included a partial to full basement. We have retained a structural engineer and based on his documentation of our property and the review of the 226 architectural plan and without knowledge of the geotech results and engineering plan believes that our utilities, including water, sewer and gas, as well as the foundation, may be undermined without proper shoring and underpinning. The owners of 226 have assured us that the protection of our property and relocation of any utilities would be their responsibility, including the relocation of an electrical line currently on their property that is maintained by an easement with PSC and G. Our interest is simply in protecting our property, not boarding the project. We support this project with the condition that the SEO engineer and all respective professionals that are a part of the process in taking protective measures, provide a written plan of action and consult with our structural engineer to ensure the safety and protection of our property. We request that acceptable shoring and underpinning be achieved prior to construction to ensure the safety and protection of our building's foundation, utilities and relocation thereof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, well, someone, Jim, you had your hand raised and it went away. So I'm going to move to the next person. Okay, so next is Jim Crane. I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Jim Crane and it's J I M K R A N E. And I'm at 221st Street, so over on the next block.
Okay, Mr. Crane, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath?
Yes, I do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I just got a letter about this. I hadn't known about it, so I'm curious, is there a demolition of an existing house involved?
Yes, I believe there's an existing structure that will be taken down.
Okay, and is this in the historic district?
It is.
Okay, so I'm just curious how that's possible to.
Wait, no, I don't know, wait, I must, I think I'm.
No, it's, sorry, it's not in the historic district. It's located in the R2 zone. It's close to it, but it's not within it. And for the record, this is Lindsay.
Okay. All right, well, so I have a house on, you know, the next block over that is in the historic district. So for some reason, they were able to knock down a house next to mine, build a five-story apartment building on two lots that's been turned into an Airbnb hotel. So I've had lots of settlement issues and my tenants have, you know, lots of issues with people coming and going, throwing parties at all hours of the night, et cetera. So just wanted to toss it out there as a word of warning that, you know, there are issues with demolishing existing houses. You know, it's a historic house, I'd rather see it renovated and used, you know, preserved. And then, you know, if you get an Airbnb hotel and on that block, you're going to be, you know, it's not going to be a pleasant situation for the folks that are living there. You know, you have to get up for work the next day. So that's all I had to say.
Okay.
Be grateful for any comments on that, if there were any responses.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Just for the record, we have received our determination of significance to permit the demolition of the structure. And the intent here is for the four family members or the units all to be occupied by family members.
Right, so next we have Annie Kessler. Annie, I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Okay, my legal name, maybe I should give that, is Margaret, M A R G A R E T, Kessler, K E S S L E R. Annie is A N N I E, so you can do it either way. 229 Bay Street.
And Ms. Kessler, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the board and the Garcia family, who really has been communicating really well with the neighbors and accommodating a lot of the things that we've looked for and Mr. Harrington as well. If, we're mostly concerned about Stefania's situation next door, so as long as her, what she's looking for is provided, that's fine, that's good. I do have a question about the pile driving commitment. Is that in writing somewhere and is that attached to the approval?
It can be. I mean, I think it is, but we're definitely not pile driving.
Right, right. So, but I'd like to see, I think, I really hope and I expect that the Garcias really are going to be able to hold on to this project, do it themselves and live there because they've been very good neighbors in the other property that they've done, which is almost next door to us. And they've been good neighbors throughout this whole process as well. But you never know, things change. So whatever is promised, I think, needs to be in writing, so whoever ends up developing this building has to stick with it.
So we've made that representation to planning and we're making that representation tonight on the record that there will be no pile driving associated with this development.
Okay, so that's something that anybody who develops it has to do then?
Correct.
Great. All right, well, in that case, I'm enthusiastically supporting this. I think they have been, any problems that have come up with the neighborhood that we needed the help of the Garcias because they're now our neighbors on our side of the street, they've been very responsive and helpful. And I think during the construction of their other building, they were very considerate. I would like to see construction start at 8:00 AM instead of 7:00, because the workmen tend to get there before 7:00, when they're going to start at 7:00. I don't know if there's any way that that can be incorporated into anything in writing.
Yeah, I believe my clients can agree to that as well, that they'll start at 8:00 AM.
Great, he had told me that, you know, over the phone at one point. But I just want to make sure that it's carved in stone, as it were. All right, so thank you, everybody, and thank you, Garcia family, for being such good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Patrick Minton. I'm unmuting you, Patrick. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Patrick Minton, P A T R I C K. Minton, M as in Mary, I N as in Nancy, T O N as in Nancy. I'm at 228 Bay Street, right on the other side of the development. That's up for discussion here.
Okay, Mr. Minton, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So Margaret kind of just asked what was most on my mind, which is the construction of 8:00 AM. We've heard a lot about 224 Bay Street. There is another neighbor on the other side, 228, that has not been mentioned up to this point. We're a brand-new building ourselves, you know, for the life of me, I'm not sure why they need variances. I don't know, we, it just, I don't know. But even if we're upset by it, and I'm hoping that will be heard. Having said that, Robert's been flexible and he reached out to us and he took the floor off the top, so it was four stories, and I really do appreciate that. It's just gotten to the point where if we could get construction, I mean, you know, it seems like we're losing these battles, so I'm clawing for every inch I could get here. If we could get the 8:00 AM start and no weekend construction, I mean, our entire building, everybody's bedroom and our beds are three feet from that property line that they're building directly up to. I just, we just moved in. I can't imagine it's going to be a pleasant 18 months here coming up for us. Robert has been working with us, so I'm not trying to say, you know, he's been cordial. We are welcoming him. We all want nicer buildings in the area. But I'm just, I see these two 40-story buildings going up a half a block away and the trash that the construction workers leave, it's nauseating. It has gotten so out of hand. And just to have another construction site now even closer, it's just, it's getting overwhelming. And the trash and the homeless people, I mean, a guy was going number two on the street the other day, like Bay Street has been so neglected throughout this whole thing. And I see people sweeping up and down Newark Ave all day and just, they could turn the corner and they'd clean us up for a month. So I'm just, I'm literally just begging for that to be a focus. And, you know, I just, sometimes it feels like you ask a question, and I appreciate Chat asking about the tree, but just because they say it's an inferior tree, we don't just all move on. It might be the best tree on the block. So I'm, you know, I'm just sitting here, like, I have a tree over here that they just put in in front of ours. It's six feet tall. I mean, it's going to be six feet tall until I sell the place in 10 years. And I know these trees don't grow overnight. So these are just very real for me. Robert, thank you, Robert Garcia is the guy we've been in touch with up to this point. Thank you for taking the top floor off. It's been, it's been nice to hear you meet us in the middle. Just the last things I would try to ask is, you know, just, the garbage has just gotten so bad and I can't see it getting better at this point with another construction team joining the street.
Thank you very much. Chuck, do you have any way of addressing some of those concerns?
Yeah, very quickly, we're committing to the 8:00 AM start that Ms. Kessler and Mr. Minton requested. And as far as weekends, we were agreed to no work on the weekends. Jersey City does not permit it except in emergencies or essentially, in my experience, you have to get the neighbors to be okay with it. But it really has to be some, you know, some emergent construction that you have to, you know, shelter the building or something. But, so we agree with both of those.
And is there something, the concern raised about like the number of just stuff in the area, garbage, what would be your recommendation generally to the neighbors on this topic? I mean, I think this is a little beyond kind of the scope of the particular application.
I'm not sure what, you know, garbage is defined as. Are we talking about during construction or during, you know, just people, you know, dropping things along the street? I'm not sure. We do, we have, you know, have a trash room here in the basement and the elevator goes down to the basement, so all our trash, I say our, all the project's trash, will be confined indoors.
I think they meant specifically during the construction.
Well, I, I can only say, I know, you know, my clients, they, they built across the street, 225. So they're experienced builders. They're going to live there. This, this little portion of Bay Street is their, their, their community. So I know they'll make all their best efforts to keep it clean during construction.
Since you are, is there anyone else from the public?
Yes, there's one more hand raised. Peter Yang, I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
Hey, everyone. My name is Peter Yan. Last name is Y A N G. And I'm also living in 228 Bay Street, so right next door, just on top of Patrick.
Okay, Mr. Yang, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so Robert, he proactively retro to us and he shared like a modified version of his plan with us about like a month or two months ago. And he asked, I guess, us to provide feedback. And I, and I did provide him feedback and express concern. And my main concern to him was the lack of front property line setback. So I missed the first couple of minutes of this meeting, but I'm not sure his plan have changed since then. But the plan that he shared with me, the building will build right up to the property line on the first floor. And on the second, third and fourth floor, you actually go over the property line of the overhand. So my main concern with that is, I mean, the building, the already building right next door to us and all of our windows are on the, on the side to 226. So we are already losing all of our windows and access to light on that side. And just him, I guess, just with the plan that was shared a month ago, with the building, building, being over the property line from the second to the, to the top floor, that would just, I guess, even further restrict the lighting access to, to our apartment, our apartment building. So that's really just my main concern. And then the second one is the, the, the starting time at 8:00 AM. And now everyone's working from home. So that's really important to us. So and I appreciate, I appreciate 226 agreeing to that and no construction starting 8:00 AM. So I mean, concerning just the lack of the front, the front yard setback and actually building over the property line.
You want us to address that? It's a.
Sure, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the short answer, the plans have not changed in that regard. Yeah, it is up to the, to the, the front property line with a cannon lever over on the, on the upper floors, which is, is permitted per the, the building code. So that's part of the design and the, the architectural aesthetics that, I mean, Jeff can address it as well. But is, if you look along the street here, we did look at this issue. The predominant front yard is, is a zero lot line. If you look at the corner properties and, and there's another property on the street and in the 218 that was approved by this board is also zero lot line. So that was, that was an issue we looked at, but we believe this is, you know, an appropriate build out. Anyone else, Lindsay?
There's another hand raised. Amelia, apologies if I misspronounce your name. I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Hi, thank you, Lindsay. This is Amelia, A M I L E A, last name L I, pronounced Amelia Lee. My address is also 228 Bay Street.
And Ms. Lee, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. And I guess I don't really have any questions. It's really to just echo all of our neighbors' feedbacks and comments. So we did receive very active communication from Mr. Garcia. And there were several presentations that I attended. And I think there was very, a pretty good and pretty clear communication. Very excited and happy to hear that we got the agreement to push back construction by one hour during the weekday. Definitely a plus for everyone who is working from home right now. I guess my comments for this, it's really just echoing all of our neighbors' comment. And then maybe I'll expand on the garbage comment a little bit more. So we do have a lot of units on Bay Street. And whether you say the garbage is coming from people who are walking through the neighborhood or it's because the garbage were not properly picked up, either way, the street is not the prettiest. And there tends to be lots of garbage just laying around on the street. And it's, it's hard to imagine what it would be like if there's another huge building that's going up in the neighborhood. So that is indeed a concern. And then the second comment I have, it is related to the setback variance that the building is seeking. So similar to comments, you know, the building will be built up to the property line next to 228, our very own building. So there will be no access to a lot of the natural light because of this. And the overhang in the front, as well as the balcony overhang in the back, will definitely restrict our access from both sides. And I've been to a couple other meetings, planner meetings, where I've seen other developers who have committed to providing additional setbacks or kind of making the top floor shorter, kind of backing up from the property line a little more to allow that access. That would be something that would be really nice if we can eventually move towards that. And then, oh, no, I think, you know, welcome to the neighborhood, to the street. We're very happy to see other construction opportunities. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
And that's it for hands raised.
Okay, so.
Close the public.
Yep, we're going to close the public portion of the application. Staff, any comments?
Just real quickly, so as was stated earlier, this application was previously heard back in June and was previously presented as a five-story building, four units with parking. And after feedback, the applicant decided to carry to a future date to revise plans. So the plans before you today are four-story building with four units and no parking. So due to the substantial revisions, they re-noticed and the height and the parking variances originally requested are no longer relevant. So I revised my staff report to reflect these changes. The applicant is now proposing a building with conforming heightened stories. And the non-conforming parking was removed since parking is not permitted on a lot of this size in the R2. With some ground floor details, such as the trash room and bike storage, removed to the cellar. And where parking was previously proposed, a lawn area is now proposed in its place. So to very quickly speak to the variances, use variance is requested since townhomes are permitted and a multifamily building is proposed. By definition, a townhome is attached to adjacent buildings, which is not possible here since the adjacent buildings are not built to their lot lines. So staff is in support of the requested variance due to that existing condition. And the density variance is requested since only three units are permitted here and four are proposed. So when evaluating a density variance, site suitability is what's relevant. And so the way the floor plans are laid out, one unit per floor, and the units average about 1,400 square feet each, which are adequately sized. So adequately sized units plus having a structure of conforming height and stories helps meet that criteria. So staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in my staff report, which we could mark for the record. And I know there were a couple other conditions that were brought up throughout this testimony. So there is a difference between putting something on the record and something being put forth as a condition of the board's approval. So meaning when you make a motion, are these other conditions included? So I didn't know if we wanted to have a conversation, if you wanted me to reiterate some of those points. I'll just do it really quickly. I wrote them down. So one condition would be to share the results of the GeoTech report with the owner of 224 Bay Street. And any underpinning would be in coordination with their engineer. And to continue working with the neighbors regarding the sewer line. And if needed, the applicant would pay for the costs associated with moving the sewer line. And the last piece was an 8:00 AM start time for construction. So these aren't staff recommended conditions for the support of the application, but I just think it's important to, you know, have that conversation if those are conditions that, that the board is putting forward.
And you said you may mark your report. Are we marking the report?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This will be one for this application.
Great. And that's all I had. Had any questions? And if you wanted to discuss those extra conditions, including staff conditions.
I think that's a good point. Chuck?
I have a question for Lindsay. So could you just speak a little bit to these side setbacks that faces 228 as we've had three speakers from 228? And it seems that the way that building is designed, that their bedroom windows are now, will now be facing a wall. I, I'm assuming that the side setback is what it, what it needs to be, you know, at minimal. But can you speak a little? A lot of buildings don't, don't have many windows on the side around this town.
Right. So in the R2, there are no setback requirements. They could build up to the lot line. But obviously, we want to be sensitive to any existing windows. So they are proposing 2.9 feet on one side. And Mr. Harrington, I don't know if this was already discussed, but I do believe they are proposing an additional one-foot easements on one of those sides. So I, maybe Mr. Lewis or yourself wanted to clarify which side the 2.9 feet is proposed and which side the one-foot easement is proposed.
I think you're, I think you're mixing it up because we're giving the one foot on the 224 side. And that, together with the 2.9 on 224 is going to create almost a four-foot alleyway. On the other side, we have a three-foot side yard setback. So that's in addition to, to 228's side yard setback.
Okay.
Thank you.
How can we get those extra proposals put into as conditions?
Nick, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Can you hear me? How can we, how can we make those actual conditions to the application? Those extra proposals that were already agreed to, that was on the record.
Lindsay, is there a way to ensure? How would we do that?
I guess just for the record, if Mr. Harrington wants to agree to those additional conditions on top of staff recommended conditions, then that would be reflected in the memorialized resolution. So I guess this evening, we wouldn't be memorializing the resolution. It would be at the, at the next hearing when the resolution is revised to reflect those.
And yes, absolutely. Those, I mean, that was our intent, that that would be part of our approval. So we can add them as conditions of approval.
Okay.
And if I may, if I may just say, Mr. Harrington, I, I personally just appreciate your client going forth and working with the community as far as with, you know, either compromising or just hearing what the community's concerns were. You know, just so that they're actually part of the neighborhood, not just developers. So, you know, I just want to say that I personally appreciate that commitment from your client.
Thank you. So.
Any other? Vinnie, what are you saying?
I was saying, are we ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on G19-108 for approval with staff conditions and the additional conditions that were agreed upon tonight.
I second it.
All right. So when I do a roll call, please be mindful if you are on mute or not. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes, and I just want to reaffirm my agreement with Commissioner Jamie. This developer and his team went well beyond what we usually see in working with the neighbors and adjusting the plan that's been in for the neighbors. Thank you all.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, I'd like to make a quick comment. Those comments about the tree, unfortunately, the tree, we noticed right now with, after this major storm that we just had, that a lot of these trees, and there is a study going on right now, I believe, about the condition of trees throughout the city, where a lot of them are damaged in some form or not worth keeping in the sub, in the sidewalks right now and replacing them with younger trees and take time to beautify and make them big and mature again. But it is a project that the city is working on right at this present time. And with the situation with the garbage, I mean, I think the, it was a mix of emotion there where the garbage between the, more likely, what I think the Ms. Kessler, I believe her name was, was speaking about was the garbage about with the construction workers or the gentleman that lived behind the house with the construction workers leaving a lot of trash and garbage. I know the Garcias are very well-liked in the neighborhood from all the responses that we've heard tonight. And I just believe that the Garcias would abide by keeping their garbage, try as best as anybody can in the city to keep it, you know, under wraps until the night the garbage goes out. And then we know that garbage in the city right now is a mess all over the city. So with that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
First, I would like to agree with all my colleague commissioners and all the comment they made, and especially the one about the developer working with the community. And my vote will be yes. Thank you.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
My motion carries. All in favor with conditions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Lindsay, don't kick me off.
Thank you for the reminder. And Chuck, you are right. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
We're off to record. We're off to record.
Ahmed, your hair looks very neat and trim. Very nice. I can't say the same about me.
Rasmun, Mr. Rasmun, are you talking to me?
I was trying.
Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna proceed with case Z nineteen dash one one eight. Address is one eighty fourth Central Avenue.
Hey, I promoted Ben Nadel and their planner, Dr. Robin. I'm leaving Chuck and Charles on because I think they have the next case, so you could just keep your camera off.
So Mr. Nadel, before we start, uh you have given us your affidavit, your proof of service, your notice of publication, and Bridget will mark that as A one.
Okay, this will be A one for this application.
And Mr. Nadel, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, members of the board, Ben Nadel from the law firm of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant Sherman Property LLC. The property this evening is one eighty fourth Central Avenue. It's block four nine zero four, lot three. Is located in the R one zone, is currently improved within existing three story, three unit residential building. Uh the applicant was actually before the zoning board back in June of twenty eighteen, so a little over two years ago uh for this same property. Uh back in twenty eighteen, the applicant obtained a use variance to permit the development of a four story, three unit dwelling with one car garage. Uh at that time, the applicant was going to demolish the existing structure. Uh now, uh the applicant has submitted a new application, uh which is why we're here this evening. Uh the applicant's seeking to keep the existing structure, but upgrade and expand the dwelling. Uh the dwelling will stay at three stories rather than four stories uh and is proposing to remove the one car garage. The dwelling will stay at three units. There are associated site improvements uh and upgrades that our architect will testify to this evening. Uh since we are expanding the existing nonconforming use and is seeking a D two variance uh to permit the expansion of the nonconforming use. Uh there's also a few associated bulk variances. Some of these are preexisting nonconformities. Some of them are not. Uh our professional planner this evening will testify to the specific variances being sought. Uh so with that said, uh we have two members this evening. We have Jeff Lewis, our architect, who we, I believe the board already heard from this evening, familiar with Jeff. Uh and we also have Carolyn Worstel from Jezner Robin, our professional planner. Uh should we have them sworn in uh now?
Or we can do them one at a time?
Sure.
All right, so uh we'll start with Jeff. We'll let Jeff sworn in.
Mr. Lewis, I remind you, you remain under oath, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. And we continue to to accept uh Mr. Lewis's qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I'm gonna jump right into screen sharing here. And we'll bring up the plans for one eighty fourth Central Avenue. As was mentioned, this is an existing three story, three family that we are expanding, but keeping as a three story, three family building. Uh just to locate us exactly on Central Ave. This is the site. Central Ave is this north south street. Uh Reservoir Avenue is the closest cross street to the south. We are actually directly across the street from Persian Field Park. Uh and this line here, just to orientate you, is where below it is the reservoir. So park's here, reservoir is here. Uh looking at the existing site plan, we are not making any changes to the rear yard. There's a tree we're keeping, a large lawn area, a patio. All this will remain unchanged. And then in the side yard, uh there's a concrete walk that we're also keeping. The front yard, however, is where we're making all the changes. Uh currently, there is a one car garage and the entire yard itself is is paved over. It's not paved, it's concrete. And it's the walkway to the house, it's the driveway to the to the garage, and then there is a curb cut. We're proposing to put an addition, a three story addition on the front of the house uh that would take up the place of where the driveway is right now, eliminate the garage, eliminate the driveway, eliminate the curb cut, and additionally plant uh a new street tree on Central Avenue. And I just want to briefly show you on the next sheet. On the bottom left, you can see the elevation of our existing building. Uh there are actually four of these in a row on Central Avenue. We are the last of the four. To the right of us is a four story stucco building. And this plant, this elevation that we showed you, the garage door to the right, and all of this is all concrete on the ground. Looking at the floor plans, uh existing first and second floor plan are on the left here. The first floor plan is a one car garage and a studio apartment. The second floor plan right now is a three bedroom apartment. We are changing these all to two bedroom apartments. So we're putting the addition on the front. Uh and then uh we have a covered entry into a residential lobby, which where you could access apartment number one. You can access the meter rooms, you can access an internal trash room. And then also, lastly, the sprinkler room, because this building will now be fully sprinkled, which it is not right now. Uh the apartment on the ground floor is nine hundred and eighty four square feet. It's a two bedroom, two bath apartment. Back of a washer dryer in the unit. Uh there's a master suite. And uh they have double doors on the back of both bedrooms that open out into the rear yard. Uh the second floor apartment is also a two bedroom, two bath apartment, but it's a little larger. The it's actually a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty nine square feet. The two bedrooms in the rear are all laid out exactly the same, with the exception of instead of opening to the rear yard, they have Juliet balconies because they're on the second floor. Uh the front of the building, the kitchen is still open. The living area is just much larger, encompassing all the space from the trash room and lobbies below. We also have a small balcony on the front with double doors opening out to it, and that's what's providing the uh building, the coverage for the building entry at the ground floor. Uh existing third floor is the same as the second floor, and the roof plan, there's just nothing on the roof right now. Uh we are proposing, our third floor plan is actually almost exactly the same as the proposed second floor plan. It's also one thousand one hundred and twenty nine square feet on this floor. The one difference is that we're adding this spiral staircase in the living room. Uh and this spiral staircase is going up to the roof, so I'm gonna go over to the roof plan where we have a one hundred square foot mezzanine, which is private space for uh this third unit. And they have access uh to a door out to the front to their own private deck. This private deck is uh one hundred and eighty seven square feet of of decking, and then fifty one square feet of it is a uh grass trays. That's this area in the front. On the rear of the building, we also have the main stair for the building going to the roof, and that's going to a roof deck that's going to be common for all the building tenants to access. Uh this roof is three hundred and seventy six square feet of decking, and then the last ten feet of the building is grass trays, which comes out to one hundred and ninety four square feet. Looking at the elevations, at the top, we have the existing front elevation, and then this is the existing side. This is the the side that has the right side with the alleyway on it. Uh looking at the bottom is our proposed, on the alleyway side, we are eliminating a few of the windows that we didn't need and re-siding the building with vinyl siding. And then this is the addition on the front, which will also have vinyl siding. The front of the building will be a brick building. Um red brick is the main um building component here. It's gonna be a smooth red brick, cast stone for the base and cast stone for our window lintels. The windows are going to be large, uh aluminum with black frames and transoms. The balcony railings are also going to be black aluminum, and uh we have fiberglass cornices that are going to uh also be painted black. Uh this is the rear and the other side elevation. Most of this elevation is connected to the building next to us. It's actually connected up to this line here, and so what we're showing is that where we're extending in the front path, the existing building to our left, we're gonna finish that that wall with brick. And then that's that's gonna turn at the balcony, and we have windows at this at this turn uh in the building as well. And then on the rear, we're changing, we're doing new siding uh on the upper floors, and you can see the new Juliet balconies and and double glass doors at all the levels of the building. Um and that's that's our proposal. I could do architectural questions, or we can go through the planning and do everything together. That's up to you guys.
And I mean, I don't care what what order we go in, uh but what would be next? Mr. Nadel?
Next would be our professional planning testimony.
Okay, great.
All right. First, would you raise your right hand if you swear? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and please unmute yourself?
My apologies, I do.
Thank you, and please state your and spell your full name for the record.
Carolyn Worstel, C A R O L Y N, Worstel, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to uh bring to the board's attention, uh this is Ms. Worstel's first appearance uh before the zoning board this evening, and uh if the board would like me to qualify her, she is ready to give an overview of her educational experience and work history.
Whatever you want to do.
Yes, I think you should qualify her, please.
Yeah.
Just briefly.
Sure. So uh Carolyn, could you please give the board a quick overview of your educational background and your uh work history? And are you a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Uh yes, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I have my master's in city and regional planning from the Edward J. Blasting School, Planning and Public Policy. Um I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Um I've been a planner for five years, mostly working up in New York, but I've also been working in the past couple of years here in New Jersey.
Okay, great. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh Carolyn, you're familiar uh with the site plan being presented this evening, uh the property, and you've reviewed the applicable zoning for uh this area, correct?
I have.
Uh could you please uh give the board an overview of the uh variance relief that uh accompanies the application this evening?
Sure. Um so we have um a couple of variances. Uh the first one is the D two use variance, as this is a preexisting nonconforming use. It is a three unit um existing three unit residential building in the R one district, which only permits one and two family. Additionally, we have a couple of bulk variances, two of which are subsumed within that use variance. The first one is for the front yard setback, which is zero feet um with a proposed um addition to the front of the building um as well as um a variance for the floor to floor or the floor to ceiling height of that addition, which is eight feet, because uh as it matches the existing floor to floor height of the the building. Um additionally, we need a variance, um a C two variance for the front yard landscaping, uh which is thirty one percent, where sixty percent is required. So going through those, um under relevant case law for the um the D two use variance, um which is Burnbridge versus Mine Hill, into some of the special reasons that can be granted for a D two use variance um would be looking to tend to minimize nonconformities as well as aesthetic improvements um with the granting of the variance. Um in this case, we're not increasing the density of the project. We're not increasing the nonconforming in terms of the size of the 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 number of units, uh but we are looking, we will be minimizing the nonconformities of the site plan. As Mr. Lewis mentioned, uh we are gonna be removing that front yard parking, which is nonconforming. We're gonna be removing the garage on the ground floor, which was undersized and nonconforming. Um we're also going to be eliminating that curb cut um along Central Avenue. And additionally, we're gonna be providing some front yard landscaping uh where there is none existing today. Subsumed within that you that use variance, again, as I mentioned, we have a front yard setback. It is going to be at zero feet. Um if I can uh share my screen. There we go, share. Can everyone see the plans?
Yes.
Yes. Um uh as we mentioned, we are going to be having a zero foot side yard or front yard setback. Um you can see right here, um this perpendicular, the street comes at an angle, and at this corner right here, we are at a zero foot uh front yard setback. However, we are matching uh the the front yard setback of this building that's adjacent to us to the south. As well as there's another building beyond that down the street that's also at a zero foot side yard setback. So it is similar to the buildings near to it, um adjacent to it, just not to the buildings on the uh north of it, which are set back in this staggered pattern. With the with the bringing the building forward, again, we are we are eliminating that front yard parking, um which is not conforming as well as providing um aesthetic improvements to the building with the whole new facade that uh Mr. Lewis presented. We're additionally with this addition in the front, we are not exceeding uh the uh coverage, uh building coverage for the site. Uh we are conforming. Um additionally, uh the rear yard setback is thirty six feet, uh which does meet the 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 combined um requirement for both the front and rear setbacks, which is thirty five feet in the R one district. Uh so we are providing in that um aspect a um kind of a conforming um rear yard um setback. Um additionally, as I mentioned, subsumed within, also subsumed within that use to um variance, we've got uh the height, uh floor to floor height. Um again, the uh proposed floors are matching the existing heights um so that they can match up, um which happens to be um eight feet floor to ceiling where nine feet is required. And then finally, that front yard landscape is again uh thirty one percent of the front yard where sixty percent is required. As you can see, there is a um small landscaping uh section right here at the corner of the property. The remainder of the front yard, which is this area here, um is either going to be pavers to um provide access to the front entrance, or is um a small bit of concrete that's sort of um Pavers to um provide access to the front entrance or is um a small bit of concrete that sort of um fills in that odd triangular gap between the front of the building and the sidewalk. Which was really not suitable for um additional uh landscaping. It was just too small to really to be of any um viable for planting. On on balance, the benefits of this project outweighs detriments. We're renovating an existing three-family dwelling, um, to provide three two-bedroom, two-bath units. Uh, we're eliminating the non-conforming front yard parking, the parking garage, we're eliminating that curb cut um on Central Avenue. Um, we're going to be providing uh front yard landscaping where none existed, a new street tree. In addition, um, the roof uh is going to be improved with that uh green uh green roof, at least partial green roof. Uh, the project advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. It's, you know, encouraging appropriate uh development of the site. Um, it's going to provide adequate light and air uh to the adjacent properties. Where's, you know, no, no windows along these side yards. We have adequate light here in the rear. Uh, the existing expansion, the existing three families, I going to stop just the appropriate population densities. Um, and uh will provide a improved uh visual environment with the upgrades to the existing front facade. In terms of the negative criteria, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Um, you know, we're eliminating front yard parking, uh, parking garage, we're eliminating that um potential for conflict between pedestrians on the sidewalk and people trying to um back out of this driveway. Um, and we're providing a new street tree um along the sidewalk. Additionally, there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Um, we are providing a residential use in a residential district, um, and preserving the integrity of that uh use, the existing use.
Thank you, Carolyn. But this time I ask if the board uh has any questions? Or I, Carolyn or uh Mr. Lewis?
Does anyone have any questions um at this point? Chuck?
I have a question for the planner.
Of course.
Help me out a little understanding in. Drawings are tiny, so I can't see any of the dimensions.
Okay.
So can you help me out while you're saying that um some irregular part of that front area is unsuitable for anything other than concrete?
It is this small triangle right here. So it looks like maybe a foot or two is the widest that it gets. Um, and it narrows to zero.
That's pretty tiny. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions at this point? Any questions or comments from the public?
I don't see any hands raised, but again, if you're calling in, you would dial star nine. And if you're on your computer or laptop, you would click raise hands toward the bottom of your screen if you have a question or a comment.
Okay, should we maybe get started with um staff report comments? And then if we see some from the public, we can go back to that.
So I just wanted to point out, uh, there was an error on the agenda. This is not a use variance, but an expansion of a non-conforming use. The applicant noticed correctly and my staff report references the correct variances. I just wanted to put that on the record that this is a D two, not a D one. So this is an existing three-family home in the R one on Central Avenue Heights. Uh, for context, the project is across the street from Pershing Field. The site currently includes a curb cut and front yard parking. And the applicant is proposing to expand the structure to enlarge the existing three units, close the curb cut, add front yard landscaping and permeable pavers, and to improve the facade. The addition is mainly adding floor area expanding into the existing front yard. Uh, the roof plan includes a conforming mezzanine, so an enclosed space of 100 square feet. So no height variance is required here, it's a conforming three-story building. Uh, there are also roof decks and a green roof area included on the roof plan. Now, as I said earlier, this is an application for an expansion of a non-conforming use. This is since this is a three-family in a one and two-family home zone. Based on the zoning determination letter and current tax records, the third unit is pre-existing non-conforming. And the tax, the historic tax card, 1974, also lists this as a three-unit building. So with this proposal, they're not looking to legalize the third unit, it's pre-existing. And the justification for a G two variance includes improvements to the site. And the applicant is proposing to enhance the existing facade, remove front yard parking, add landscaping and add a street tree. Therefore, it's the opinion of staff that this requirement is met. And while the front yard setback is now non-conforming, uh, one building immediately next door also has a zero foot front yard setback. It's important to note that the rear yard is fully conforming uh at 36 feet. So due to the proposed front yard expansion, the the 60% front yard landscaping requirement is not being met, but rather 31% uh landscaping is proposed. However, permeable pavers are proposed and there are green roof tiles as well. Therefore, I don't think there would be any substantial detriment to the purposes of that provision. So staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in my report dated August 11th, which will be marked. And that's all I have. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, and does it look at this point like like anyone from the public has any questions or comments?
I don't see any hands raised.
Close the portion for public, please.
Yes, we're going to close the public portion on the application. Um, does anyone have any questions um for staff at this point? Okay, does anyone want to make?
Like to make a motion, make a motion on Z nineteen dash one one eight for approval with any staff conditions.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Uh, Commissioner, you are on mute.
Still on mute, Anthony.
Yes.
There you go.
Commissioner Jamie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner McForman?
Yes, and uh Carolyn did a good job there.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes, thank you.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
All motion carries, all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck on the project. Okay, with that, we're proceeding with case Z nineteen dash zero eight six. The address is 132 Mallory Avenue.
Okay, um, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant. And I ask that the uh notices be reviewed and marked in evidence.
Yes, we have reviewed your notices, we'll mark them as A one. You have your uh affidavit of proof of service and your notice of public key, Bridgette, A one in evidence.
A one in evidence.
And again, Mr. Harrington, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just uh for the record, the agenda uh provides that we're asking for a use variance only. We are asking for a height variance in connection with this project, uh, and we did notice for that as well. Okay, so this this property, um, we'll give a brief overview and then we'll jump into uh Mr. Lewis again is our architect. And uh Mr. Height uh will take you through the requested variances. We are asking for uh a use variance uh for the multi-family building and height variance for five stories, approximately 55 feet. It is a corner lot uh that's uh located the corner of Mallory Avenue and Virginia Avenue. And so, um, and it is a little over 10,700 uh square feet, actually 10,740 square feet. Uh, currently, it is a uh commercial warehouse office, if you will, for uh Guarini Plumbing. It has had their operations there of, you know, for a very long time. So you have a lot of um, you know, trucks going, not trucks, but pickups, you know, going in and out. A lot of activity there with a lot of employees coming and going. So the idea here is to um convert, demolish that building. And there's also a building that was uh acquired next door, um, and transform them into uh this proposed five-story building with 40 residential units. And we have 22 uh onsite parking spaces within the garage. As you'll see during the um presentation, we have uh access uh off of Virginia and and Mallory. So it goes, it goes through um the building. Now, you, our our proposal here, we believe um the uh the project is is appropriate and particularly suited here because it's a corner lot and because um. Because of the size of the lot and we are getting uh rid of this non-conforming use, which we think will be a benefit uh to the neighborhood. And we also think in a bigger picture here, this uh, this area of of Jersey City is an emerging neighborhood. Down uh on Mallory Avenue, um, you just walk a couple of blocks uh to to the south. And you're going to run into the Route 440 Culver uh redevelopment plan and the Water Street redevelopment plan. And they've been there um for some time, but now, you know, if you, if you're in that area, you'll see that that it's changing right before our eyes. That is all centered around uh the light rail station, the West Side uh light rail station. That was the intent years ago when they extended it, uh, extended the light rail to the west side. And they first created the Water Street redevelopment plan. Now you're seeing this emergence on and uh and the the buildup and the density. And of course, uh, you know, not that it's next door, but the bayfront uh development is also across 440. So it's it's really uh an area of Jersey City that I think is is changing before our eyes. So I think we think the project here is consistent with um what is emerging um down the street, five stories, six stories, seven stories. And you know, similar type uh projects. So um, we did, I, we did um uh meet with the councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Prinzieri uh to uh, you know, present this uh project. We also, she coordinated a community meeting to present that um. You know, over the last few months, it's been a little crazy, but we did finally have one um uh earlier in the week, actually. We got canceled last week because of the storm, but we've been trying to work on that for for months. But um, we have, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know who's who's here from the public, but at that point, those those meetings, we did not uh get any adverse comments. But uh, again, I'll, you know, leave it to whomever is here tonight uh to comment on it. But that said, uh, Jeff Lewis is our architect, so um he will take you through that and then Mr. Height's going to play cleanup.
Mr. Lewis?
Okay.
Under oath?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, he remains under oath, um, and remains qualified.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, you walk us through the the project. And Mr. Lewis, if you could point out some of, you know, the errors that we had on on the one elevation with regard to the garage, if you could point that out during your your presentation.
Yes, that will come up on the um elevation and also on the site plan. I'll make sure to clearly show that. So I'm starting here, this is on my title sheet down on the bottom right corner, just to show us where we are. We have uh, there are two properties that we're joining together. Both are fronting on Mallory Ave, one is on the corner of Mallory and Virginia. Looking from above, you can see our site is this one-story uh warehouse slash office building. This two-story house that's attached to it on the same lot. And then the white-roofed uh two, two-story home and garage in the back, which creates this little nub on our property in the back here. So those are our two properties and we're proposing a new five-story building. With 40 units and 22 parking spaces. So going to the site plan here, uh, this little nub is just a little one-story piece. The rest of this block, this main rectangle is a, is our five-story building, the bulk of our building. We're also, we're setback five feet from this property line and we're built on the uh southern property, or this property line. Um, I wanted to start walking through the, um, actually, if I could zoom in a little bit, make this a little clearer. Yeah, it's a little better. So, no, it's not going to work. Starting at the sta, at the bottom of this drawing, we have a secondary building entrance at the bottom here. And then our main building entrance is the lobby towards the center of the building. We also have a third uh pedestrian entrance at near the corner and that's to our amenity space. In addition to that, there are, there is a um, a parking garage on the ground floor. And this is where one of the mistakes, uh, one of the omissions to our original drawings was. Uh, we're proposing a one-way uh driveway in this garage. So we'll have an entry on Virginia Avenue, which is a one-way street. So cars will come uh one way in this direction and turn into the parking lot. Then there's a through driveway that we'll see on the first floor plan that comes through and exits on Mallory Avenue. And then Mallory Avenue is a two-way street, but we're showing a no left-hand turn sign. We don't want people turning left on Mallory, so it will be only right-hand turns allowed on Mallory Ave. Uh, and when I show you the floor plan, you'll see that this was already shown. Uh, however, on the, on this site plan, this curb cut and this building exit was was omitted. Uh, in addition to that, in the street right in the right of way, we are proposing all new curbs. Uh, we're, we're preserving this one street tree, which is the one that we have, and we're proposing six new street trees. Four of those are on Mallory and two of those are on uh Virginia Avenue. Um, and additionally, actually, that's all I want to talk about here. And there's one thing I want to mention on the next sheet, if you don't mind. And I think Chuck, we're going to have to talk about this. This has come up on a different project for the planning board. Uh, this is our lighting plan and we're proposing to light the sidewalk from our building from uh wall-mounted fixtures. This is something fairly common that we've been doing for a very long time. It helps keep the the streetscape a little cleaner instead of doing a freestanding uh pole lights. And it helps us to uh provide more street trees because we don't have to worry about avoiding poles uh to, and we just provide street trees uh at will. Um, however, the engineering department, one of their comments is that they would prefer pole lights, this has been coming up. Uh, so I think that's something we would prefer to not do. Um, and something we can talk about perhaps at the end of this uh presentation. But for now, I'm going to go on to the floor plans. And start with our small basement. And what it is, is utilizing an existing basement to the warehouse. So we'll be keeping that basement and using it just for uh sprinkler room and some building storage, and that's it, with one stair going down to it. All the rest of this, including what was an existing basement in that house that I mentioned before, uh, all that will just be flat on grade. Now, then looking at the first floor plan, I'm going to start at the main residential entry, which I mentioned is in the center of the building. It's a main lobby which has access to the main building stair and the elevator. Uh, through the stair, you access the amenity space. Uh, the space is 665 square feet, has its own ADA bathroom. Uh, floor-to-ceiling windows on both sides and also a door to the exterior. Um, going around the building, again, as we mentioned, on Virginia Avenue, we have our entrance to the uh parking garage. There are 22 parking spaces in this garage. One of the spaces is a handicap space. Three of the spaces at the bottom here are tandem parking spaces. Um, we have a second stair, as I mentioned, all the way at the end of the drawing. Although also in this uh, in this garage, we have a trash and recycling room, which is 144 square feet. And we have bicycle parking for 24 bicycles. Uh, and then again, the exit that I mentioned that was was neglected on the site plan out onto Mallory Avenue. Uh, moving on to the second floor plan, this is the second floor plan. However, the second, third, fourth, and fifth, all of our floor plans are exactly the same. Uh, this, we have two two-bedroom apartments on each of these floors. They're two-bedroom, two-baths that average 1,120 square feet. We have six one-bedroom, one-bath apartments that uh average 701 square feet. And then two uh studios with one bathroom that measure 493 square feet on average. So 10 units, two two-bedroom, six one-bedroom, two studios. Uh, all of them are roughly the same as far as layout with open living, dining, kitchen. They all have stackable washer dryer in the unit. Each of these units has at least one walk-in closet. For the two-bedroom units, it's a master suite where they have the walk-in closet. For the one-bedroom units, it's the one bedroom that has the walk-in closet and then obviously for the studio. And then obviously for the studio, it's just in the studio apartment. Again, as I mentioned, third, fourth, and fifth floor are all the same as the floor below. And then the roof plan, we have a roof deck. That's a total of one thousand two hundred square feet of roof decking and then two thousand five hundred square feet of green roof. The rest of the roof is, is just asphalt roofing that will be for equipment space. And both stairs elevators, both stairs and the one elevator go through this roof. And we have a small elevator lobby that, that serves the, the roof deck. Looking at the building elevation, this is the Mallory Street elevation. The base material is a light gray cast stone. And then all of the accents on this are, are black. So we have a garage door that has black aluminum pan, black aluminum finish for the frame and frosted glass for the panels, the panels, yeah. And then the lobby and the amenity space, we have wall-ceiling, floor-to-ceiling glass, which is black frame aluminum. We also have a black canvas awning, which is located above the lobby entry, above the secondary entry, and then around the corner above this amenity space. Above the first floor, we're using a brick finish, but we're using two different colored bricks to differentiate a little bit. So we have a gray, a gray brick and a red brick section, and these, these bays are alternating. All of the, all the bays do have the same, the same windows, which I'm losing, give me one second, I lost myself here, I'm sorry. So, okay, so the windows themselves have a cast stone for their sills and lintels. They're, they're aluminum, black frame windows. They have panels underneath them. Let me zoom in a little bit so you can see the detail where we're adding to the window, the windows themselves. I guess it will be this far, right? So on the second, third, and fourth floor, the windows have this aluminum, black aluminum panel inset below the window. And then on the fourth floor, that aluminum panel is actually a glass pane with a black aluminum frame. The cornice itself is a, is a built-up cornice of aluminum panels and steel. These, these are aluminum braided aluminum panels. This section here are actually solid steel brackets that are thirty inches deep. And they'll be covered with a, covered and wrapped at the top with a, again, thirty-inch-deep aluminum cornice that will be painted black. All of these finish wrap around to the Virginia Avenue side, which I'm going to switch to as soon as my computer decides to play along. Almost. Okay, so everything, as we said, wraps around the, the cast stone at the base. This is the original garage door we spoke of and all the same finishes above. Wrapping around to the rear, we are proposing a stucco, a hard stucco finish on the, on the ground floor. And then above, this is all just gray hardy plank siding. It's a dark gray color and the windows are vinyl, black win, black vinyl windows. And then these, these finishes wrap around the other side of the building, which is still on the property line, we have vinyl on the side and then stucco at the ground floor. And that's the building. Again, we can do my questions now or together with the planner.
No, we can hold all questions until the end, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, that's good.
Okay, then we'll move, move ahead with Mr. Height to address the requested variances.
And I would remind you, Mr. Height, you remain under oath, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Height remains under oath and we continue to accept his qualifications.
Fully noted, thank you. Hi, good evening again, board members. So thi- this is a new application, so my testimony tonight is, is all new with this. We are requesting a use variance. This project does, this property does have some unique attributes that really do lend itself for some opportunity for added development here. So I can give you some photos. I don't know if we've presented any, I'll share my screen. So this is the, is everyone able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is the existing single-story warehouse with the adjacent lot along Mallory Avenue. So it's a one-story brick structure. And as was mentioned earlier, based on site visits, it still is an active warehouse, supply house. There are vehicles coming and going. There is an existing curb cut you can see here along Mallory Avenue. And surrounding that is mostly residential as you go west along this block. But along Mallory Avenue, you do see some other corner uses. So here we have a little, little supermarket store at the corner with a commercial use. And there are-
Mr. Height, if I could interject, do we want to mark these group of photographs A2?
Yeah, and I, and I can provide them to the board planner.
Okay, thank you. How many photograph, well, when you're done, you can wrap it up and say, you know, identify, or if you get a, identify-
There's, there's, there are three photos, all taken today, actually, we got new photos. And I'll, I'll just, they're just for some, some existing conditions.
Thank you.
So that is essentially more or less a description of the surrounding area. We are in the R1 district, so that hence the use variance for multifamily use. The test here is really particular suitability. So in our analysis, we were able to prepare an exhibit for the board, which I will share to the board planner. But we considered this, the, the subject area, Mallory Avenue. And there's a number of reasons why. Along Mallory Avenue, you really do have a connection between the park to the north as well as what was mentioned earlier, a lot of the development in and around NJCU West Campus and just north of there. So for the most part, we considered our study area, Mallory Avenue. This is the property highlighted in red, located here. You can see just by the lot size, it is substantially larger than most other properties. We are greater than ten thousand square feet. So that is one of the first reasons that would lend itself to a larger building, given that it, the, the lot size is greater than, than what's permitted. It's almost four times greater than the minimum standard in the R1 zone, which is twenty-five hundred square feet. So the exact number is ten thousand seven hundred and forty square feet. The other interesting attribute about the property is that it is a corner lot and it does maintain approximately a hundred and thirty-six feet of frontage along Mallory. So that, that lends itself to a, a few benefits. We were able to locate a, a one-way circulation route for parking to provide that on the ground floor and really reduce the curb cuts along Mallory while, while having one narrow curb cut along Virginia. The other aspect, and this is really where the analysis gets into, is in terms of the mix of uses along Mallory Avenue. You can see the colors generally, yellow is light, or, or light density, residential, one and two-family homes. Darker is apartments, multifamilies. And then anything with, with a red is either a commercial or, or mixed-use building. So the main point, that, the main finding that we took away from this analysis when we looked all the way up to this cross-street to the north along Mallory to the south, which is just north of Route 440 Culver Redevelopment Area. This is Yale Avenue on the south, is that a third of all these study, all these properties are either multifamily or mixed-use buildings. And when you actually look at the corners, you would find it actually a more, a more consistent development pattern where more than half of every corner are more intense uses, whether it's, it's mixed-use buildings or multifamily buildings. So I think that's pretty telling, given that there is a mix of uses along Mallory Avenue and this property is, is at the corner as well. Shifting that, we also did an analysis on, it's twofold analysis. It's one on, on height and density in the area. Obviously, we are proposing a five-story, forty-unit multifamily building. There aren't very many other five stories in this area, mainly because there aren't very many other large properties in this area. The, in terms of height, we were able to, to identify several new projects that were closer towards West Side Avenue, another corridor. These were on, on Virginia, so just at the end, other end of the block. You have some four-story developments that have sixteen units and twenty-one units respectively. And those, those densities, if, when we're comparing apples to apples, are a hundred and ninety units per acre for the sixteen-unit building and a hundred and sixty-six units for the twenty-one-unit building. And those are larger lots. For the most part, all the other properties that you see range between three and, and eight families. And we've just identified them because they are other multifamilies in this neighborhood that we've, we've looked at in terms of, of density. As was mentioned, we are just within a quarter-mile, this is a quarter-mile buffer from the property. So we're just outside a quarter-mile from the West Side Avenue Light Rail Station as well as the NJ Transit Bus Terminal here, just across the street. And that's really just a, a quick walk. It's, it's typically a five-minute walk south and, and even shorter on bicycle. So that kind of speaks to some of the other develop, other similar, similar consistent development in the area. One thing I wanted to mention that, that's unique is, as, as Mr. Harrington mentioned earlier, this is a really burgeoning neighborhood. One of the reasons is that you have really great access to Lincoln Park to the north as well as all the development around the NJCU campus to the south. So this is Ward B., that's why we have a big B. here. I had to double back onto Y. This is an exhibit from the city's bicycle tran- transportation plan. And these are, are all the bicycle networks that are being implemented throughout the city and specifically in this neighborhood. So just to bring your attention, Mallory Avenue is red in here, it's got two-way bicycle lanes on-street. You can, you, you may have picked it up in the photo I showed it earlier, you can revert back to that. You see these two bicycle lanes, one's here and then, oh, sorry. And then this one is here, so they're installed along Mallory. I, I did observe people using them, riding the bikes along within those bicycle paths. So they're in good condition. But I, I think the point here is, is that it does provide for local mobility in this neighborhood. This is an extensive bicycle network. West Side Avenue is, is a little bit more of the commercial, commercial corridor in this area. And then this would be a secondary commercial corridor. So there is certainly mobility to get around to a mix of retail and commercial neighborhood services. So that's part of the particular suitability in terms of its location and access to transit and other means of transportation. I touched on the compatibility with other development in the area. I, I think in terms of the use variance, this application also advances the municipal land use law. It's removing a non-conforming industrial use and replacing that with a more compatible residential use. The proposed architecture is brick. There was the mix of architecture along the street. There aren't many precedents for other large brick residential buildings. So it's not, it's neither detracting from anything there, but it's still appropriate. It breaks up the facade with, with a nice ground floor detail along the streetscape. That's something we, we also acknowledged with, with the streetscape improvements as well as providing for some aesthetics on the upper floors and, and the detail at the top on the cornice. It, it's essentially a, a, a multifamily building that you'd find throughout the city and, and the other locations. So it definitely is, is advancing the desirable visual environment in that regard. The other element here is that it would certainly be an appropriate decision by this board to convert an industrial use, a light industrial use to a more compatible use. That's purpose A, to guide the appropriate development of land throughout New Jersey. So I do think that it would advance that, that purpose as well. When we're looking at, at the building height, obviously, we're proposing five stories and fifty-five feet. We, we, as I mentioned earlier, there, there aren't many other examples of five stories in and around this area. More of the higher development is towards the south along Mallory, once you get past Yale and to Claremont and, and beyond there. So this is kind of like a midway point between that area of development and then Lincoln Park, Park and Communipaw Avenue, which this board is, is well aware of some of the additional new development occurring along Communipaw. In terms of, I think that's really in terms of all the positive criteria I wanted to touch on, there are a number of in, of, of what we would refer to as bulk variances. But given that we're proposing a use that's not contemplated in this zone, we would need relief from many of those requirements that regulate one and two-family homes. I, I won't go through it because it really, they really are subsumed with the proposed application in terms of setbacks and coverage. We are proposing a full lot coverage, so we really don't comply with, with many of the one and two-family home requirements. So I don't need to detail those. But, but that's in connection with the use variance. So with respect to the negative criteria, we did look at how this property sits with adjacent properties. Both the adjacent properties on Virginia as well as on Mallory share a side yard. So in the R1, you do have a zero-foot side yard setback that's permitted. And, and that's really what we're matching. So the, the intent to apply that same standard here is being implemented. And I don't see that there's any sort of substantial impairment of the zone plan with respect to, to side yards and impacts from the building mass. It's, it's a taller structure. We do exceed what's permitted in terms of building height, but the intent to have adjacent dwellings in this neighborhood, and, and that's what you really do find, is being advanced. In terms of any sort of connection to the master plan, you know, the, the R1, the purpose is to encourage compatible infill development. So we're really trying to transition this property from a non-compatible use to a compatible use. And we're trying to also provide for a variety of housing. And that, that is spoken to in the master plan. And this would certainly provide for a different type of dwelling and apartment dwelling along Mallory Avenue, which is a mixed-use corridor, and it's an appropriate setting. So I really think that's with respect to the master plan, the intent and purpose of the master plan and zone plan with respect to any sort of substantial impairment or detriment to the public welfare. Obviously, we, we were really considerate about reducing the curb cuts and having a really smooth flow of traffic. We are providing twenty, twenty-two parking spaces, which is a little over half of, of the units provided. So we're at a point-five ratio. I, I mentioned the, the availability of bicycle, bicycle network and the proximity to the Light Rail Station as well as the NJ Transit Bus Terminal. So that, that adds to providing some additional mobility for residents who won't have a vehicle in this apartment building. With respect to the building mass- With respect to the building mass, again. It is a larger building. It's a larger property. I think I've I've addressed the positive elements of it, but with respect to the negative elements. This property actually is well-suited because it's at a southern end of a southern end of a corner of the block. So in terms of of light and and any shadows cast, most of the the daytime morning shadows will be cast. Into the intersection along Mallory and in Virginia, well, Virginia's to the south, but along Mallory Avenue. You won't get the impacts until in the afternoon where the sun's setting in the west and and casting shadows east eastward. But again, those cat, those shadows would likely be present with a zero-foot side yard setback of any other type of conforming. One or two family use. So. That's really some of my direct testimony. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have. But I do think that this this application does meet the intent of of a D1 use variance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Charles, if I could, just to clarify, because I think you said we had zero lot lines on the building. I believe we have a little over five-foot side yard setback along the Virginia Avenue side, which is. A little larger than the existing one. Is that correct?
Yeah, tha- thank you, Chuck, and let's let's review that. I'll go back to the site plan and I can share my screen. Okay, so that is correct along this side yard along. So this is Virginia Avenue. And we are proposing the five-yard setback there.
And then that further tapers down to three feet as you go further. Was it further north?
Yeah.
That and that section right there is only a one-story. That's where the garage is, correct?
Correct, and and this is the existing one-story. So that's remaining. This is more or less the bump out, so it's kind of an intrusion into the block. We're we're proposing that to remain as one story, and then this is the three-foot side yard setback that wraps around. So this was the side yard that that I was. Referring to with respect to being adjacent. Along Mallory, so that's zero foot.
Okay.
And this this is actually a rear yard. That's why it's a little convoluted to get into the bulk requirements, but this is a rear yard. When you're analyzing the property, but it really functions as a side yard. So we're we're matching a zero-foot side yard here.
Thank you. And just for the record, that exhibit that you were referring to with the B on it, that that will be marked as A3?
Yes, A3, it has, it's it's one sheet. We kind of just put everything onto one sheet, so it was all together. But it consisted of a tax map with land use classifications. That was our land use study. It also had an aerial with densities and heights of surrounding buildings. And then it had the exact clip from the. Bicycle master plan, the master plan for for bicycle networks that the city had prepared. So those are the three elements of that exhibit.
Thank you. So and that that completes your testimony, correct, Mr. Height?
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, that that completes our presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the board at this point?
Yeah, I got a couple, please.
Yeah.
Got a second question, too.
All right. I guess it's Mr. Lewis. Was there any consideration of any kind of water retention on the top of the building or? Yeah, I think you said there was going to be some green roof. But what about water retention?
Well, I mean, on the roof itself, the the green trays, we have twenty-five hundred square feet of green trays. So those green trays do have a degree of water retention to them. I'm not sure what else I would do on the roof on top of that. I don't think we did anything underground now.
All right, and also. I lost my little thoughts. Oh, can you clarify the number of apartments?
There are forty forty apartments.
Forty, four-zero, with twenty-two. Twenty-two parking spots?
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, wait, you're speaking over one another. Please stop.
All right, I'm sorry. All right, let me clarify again. It is forty apartments, twenty-two parking spaces. Is there anything set aside for ADA?
Yeah, we have one handicap parking space, which is what we're required to have in the parking area. And then as far as the building itself, all of these units are ADA adaptable, every one of them.
All right, thank you.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Yes. So I have a question. Why did you guys decide five stories? Like, based on the neighborhood, and I'm only saying this because I live around here, right, the same neighborhood. And. If you look down Mallory Avenue, five stories is absolutely, to me, excessive, right? Along with forty units that are, to me, designed for people who not, who are not, of course. The the apartments are designed for people without families, right? And that neighborhood is strictly. It it's a neighborhood. People live there. Even with the diagram Mr. Height showed. On the properties along Mallory, there are mixed use, but they don't exceed two stories for the most part, right? Which also adds to the family orient, I mean, the the neighborhood being family oriented. And I think this you, this this, these five stories totally disrupts that. Right? And everything that's above five stories is on the outskirts of Mallory Avenue, like on Claremont Avenue, which also starts. Going into a lot of commercial space and and really from Claremont to Culver, there's no residential. Properties other than what's on Mall, I'm on Claremont Avenue. And I think five stories and forty units kind of disrupt the flow of the neighborhood. Right? This is my opinion, and I was just curious. Maybe I gave too much right now, but I think. Five stories and forty units kind of disrupt the feel of the neighborhood. That's that's my take.
I think some some of the thinking, you know, that went behind this was what I mentioned earlier, where you you go, you go to the. To the south a little bit in in right around the West Side, we develop the the West Side Station. You have a lot of five, six, seven-story buildings here, and we kind of looked at this as almost, you know, similar to, you know, an NC zone feel. Here where you've got, you know, five stories of is permitted on on residential, fifty-five feet, which is this kind of comes in right around that. So we understand it, you know, right right now, there's there's maybe some, you know, lower buildings there, but we. We see it as really an emerging neighborhood, and that's that's the development that is that is central to there. And and as far as like families, we have, there's eight, eight two-two-bedroom units within that are a little over eleven hundred square feet. So that, I think those, you know, those are sizable units, that you can have families there. And it and it's conducive with the light rail right there as well, and Lincoln Park. So we we thought the density was appropriate because you you do have both of those at your. I don't know what the word is, I'm losing it, but they're they're right there to you. Exposure, yes, thank you.
Yeah, but the other thirty-two units offered what they call, I think, transients. Like people just coming in and out and not necessarily connecting with the neighborhood. I, you know, it's just my take.
Understood.
Can I add a little bit to this discussion, because I do live in that neighborhood? I live in a very similar building. It's called a four-over-one with parking on the first floor and fourth floor is a residential. And one reason you do that is because with a five-story building, beyond the first floor, you need no steel structure. They're all stick-built. Buildings, if they want one floor higher, they'd have to have some more steel, which adds to the cost, and of course adds a little bit maybe to the safety for tenants. My building is a six-year-old building on the corner of Mallory, on the corner of West Side and Claremont, steps away from the light rail. Around there, going up, is an extremely large project on Claremont that's about sixty to seventy percent of the block going west. From West Side to Mallory, there's another building on Mallory. A couple of blocks up, that's going up, that's about five or six floors. None of these buildings are super tall. There's a number of buildings going up, I think, on what they they may be calling the Water Street Development. Right off the four forty, there's a few buildings going up, have have gone up and some more being built. Right near NJCU. You can, I've I've spoken to people who have lived in the neighborhood for years. They hardly know any of their neighbors on the street. So the idea that an apartment building that an own, someone owning a home creates this sense of neighborhood. Might be true in terms of why they live there, but it's not some chummy, let's have picnics all the time thing, which is not necessarily bad. I think I'm one of two tenants left in my building who moved in originally, but people move in all the time and they're fine. I know Mr. Height is correct because I've I've seen the shadow from my building. A five-story building throws a shadow that's about, say, eight-thirty in the morning, eight-eight-thirty in the morning. Throws a shadow that's about fifty to sixty feet, which doesn't really reach the opposite end of the street. Planning is all about increasing density, increasing more people per square mile, which in turn hopefully brings in more businesses. And although West Side Avenue has a nice logo and some signs. And there are some new businesses going, it's still primarily a a low-rent, a bunch of discount stores. So on and so forth. So, you know, I don't, I don't feel that a multifamily building. Most people are transients in the sense that they sign a lease, and most leases are at least a year. These are not Airbnb buildings. People can always break their lease, but you know, people can always do a lot of things. So I don't particularly feel that. Planting these kind of buildings, especially when they're when they're on the corner. I don't particularly feel that our, my building, although, you know, is that disruptive to the. To. To. Claremont. But, you know, that's that's a bit of something. It is obviously significantly bulkier than what is currently on Mallory. But you could see what happened to downtown where you have the forty, fifty, sixty-story buildings, which are totally significantly bulkier. To what was downtown maybe fifteen or twenty years ago, but the whole tenor of that neighborhood has changed. And I think a lot of what's happening here, these are not affordable apartments. I don't think there are any affordable apartments, but you have to go back to the city council. As long, for the last six or seven years, people have been talking about affordable, affordable, the need for affordable. And the city council has not put it into law where it's required. They do one-off deals. For example, downtown, they didn't get an agreement that twenty percent of the building would be affordable, but other cities have put it into the ordinances. That, you know, X number of units, so it had to be affordable. Our city council hasn't done that. They just haven't done it, and we can't go back to push on developers to do something that's not in the law. So that's that's a problem, but the problem lies with the city council. They often talk and talk about this stuff, and they haven't put it into the law. So it's not going to get done, not certainly that way. Those are my two cents from someone who lives in, like Mr. Mitchell, lives in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from? Public? Any, yeah, Lindsay, anyone from the public? Looks like some raise their hand, two people.
I see two hands raised so far. So starting with Ravi, I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay. My name is Ravi Mohammed, R-A-V-I-M-O-H-A. And I live on seventy-six Linden Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Mohammed, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that your testimony tonight will be considered as under oath?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just had a couple qualms first about the sustainability of the the proposed development. I took a look at the construction documents and first thing is that. I really like that there are, there's the implementation of a rooftop garden at the top of this development. I think that's a great step forward. But looking at the, you know, the plan view of the top of that building, that rooftop garden covers probably, let's say, about a third of that. And the plants that are proposed for that garden do not really require that much soil, so we're not looking at too great of a water retention in that area. So we all know that four forty does flood a lot whenever we have significant rainstorms. And that's partly due to the fact that it sits at a lower elevation than the adjacent Boulevard, West Side Avenue, and further up. I feel like this kind, you know, for such a large-scale development, there needs to be a bit more in terms of, at least, stormwater management. To kind of make these developments a bit more sustainable. So, yeah, the rooftop garden and in that same light, the plantings, the street tree plantings. So the existing tree that's there, I believe, you know, almost certainty that it is a, you know, it's a London plane tree, great street tree, you know, beautiful, but it's massive. And so I, you know, I urge you to consider, when putting in these new street trees, to consider those that may potentially sit below power lines. Things of smaller stature, max twenty, twenty-five feet, just for a bit more of less sustainability and maintenance going forward. And less damages when we have storms come through. Also, I'm very familiar with the area, and I know that sidewalk to be particularly wide. Now, with a minimum width of five feet, you know, for compliance of ADA standards. And considering that that there are street tree pits proposed already, I'd like to see maybe some kind of bio-swell or some kind of. You know, more sustainable stormwater management proposed for those for those street tree pits, maybe something that links them and just reduces the amount of sheet flow. That this building will create once it's built. And then in addition to all that, just back to the point that Mr. Mitchell brought up, I think he hit the nail on the head. I understand that there are a lot of developments that are going up in the area, completely massive. There's a huge one. Like Mr. Rothman was saying, on Claremont Avenue, probably seventy percent of the block. And I'd imagine, yeah, you know, those are large buildings, but I do not feel that this building fits the scope of that immediate neighborhood. We're looking at mostly, you know, one-family to two-family homes in this area. And with forty units and twenty-two parking spaces and eight of the those units only being two-family units. I think we're dealing with problems when it comes to density, part, you know. Mr. Harrington, I, you've said that our goal is to.
Seconds left.
Thank you. Our goal is to increase density in the area. Uncontrary, I think that's a, not a good idea. I feel like, especially if, say, out of those twenty-two parking spaces, if any of those eighteen remaining units have a vehicle, where are they going to park those vehicles? So I think this this development has a bit to kind of look at and consider before moving forward with it, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here, we see one other hand raised. See, Manisha, I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Um, hi, yeah, I'm Manisha Prasad, M-A-N-I-S-H-A, last name P-E-R-S-A-U-D, and I live at three forty-five Virginia Avenue.
Okay, and Ms. Prasad, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have three questions. Okay, I just have three questions and concerns. I'm a resident at 345 Virginia Avenue, and I live directly across the street from the proposed development. My first concern is about the parking issues and traffic that will result if 132 Mallory is approved. According to the plans on the open data portal, there will be forty residential units and only twenty-two parking spaces. This area is already quite congested, and I don't really see where the other eighteen residential units will be able to park. And this is all assuming that it's only one car per apartment. I just wanted to know how the applicant will plan to mitigate this problem. My second concern is the noise pollution that will result from this project, especially the demolition of the existing structure. I'm a full-time university student, and my semester is fully remote due to COVID-19. My younger brother will also be attending high school remotely, and both my parents are working from home as well. Prolonged noise pollution itself is detrimental to health, and I don't particularly think that it's fair to the other residents who may be in a similar situation, especially now during this pandemic. And also, someone mentioned that the existing structure, Green Plumbing Warehouse, is also a high-traffic area with lots of people and trucks going in and out, but I'd just like to say that that is absolutely not true. It's actually extremely quiet here. My final concern and question to the applicant is, do you plan on including any affordable housing units, and if so, how many? I've lived at Virginia Avenue for over ten years, and this new development is not consistent with the surrounding community. It's a five-story apartment complex in a residential area, and yes, there are some apartment buildings that are mixed-use buildings in Mallory, but none of the magnitude and scale being produced. And to me, this building is just further promoting the narrative of gentrification and gradual displacement of local residents in Jersey City, and I'm completely against its construction. And also, to whoever said that there's, that no one knows their neighbors around this area, I completely am against that. This is truly a family neighborhood. I know the people who live next to me very well, and we treat each other as relatives. But thank you, especially to Mr. Anthony Mitchell, who expressed the same sentiment that I hold. Thank you for expressing it better than I ever could. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't see any other hands raised, but, you know, to reiterate, if you did have a question or a comment, you would click raise hand at the bottom of your screen or dial star nine. So we'll give it a second, but like I said, Chairman, I don't see any other hands raised.
Motion to close.
Yeah, we'll close the public portion. We'll go to, you know, staff comments.
If I, if I could, I'll just address comments quickly.
Sure.
And with regard to the sustainability, we'd be willing to provide bio-swells, you know, along the frontage. We think that that might help, not only with the drainage, but with the appearance, the streetscape experience. So we'd be willing to add that. We, I'm just on the parking, real quick. You know, my clients have advised me there, you know, it's an ongoing operation. They have about thirty employees there. So you have, you know, these employees coming and going all day. They're not only, you know, parking on-site, they're parking in the immediate neighborhood. So we really think that this is actually going to create a better situation because you'll have, you don't have that anymore. You'll just have the residents, and as everybody knows, you know, the cars, you know, you have twenty-two cars, they're not going to go in and out all the time, because some people may be taking the bus, some people may be taking the light rail, you know, to and from work. But during the day, it's, you know, you know, my clients tell me that it's a pretty, pretty busy place with people going in and out there.
Okay. Thank you. Chad?
I want to ask you a question of Mr. Lewis.
Sure.
Because I've had, thanks to Mr. Mitchell and his comments, and especially Mr. Prasad and her comments. One of the nice things about West Side Avenue, and to a little bit lesser extent, but still noticeable, about Mallory are mixed-use buildings with some retail under the first floor and living up above. I think that, you know, speaking only for me, I would feel more comfortable in this building if there was, you kept in the context of putting some retail space on the first floor. And that's, in terms of parking, when I first got on the zoning board, I was like, the parking bee. And I've given up that because parking, predicting the future of how people are going to get around is unpredictable, especially now. I have no interest in getting into the Via car, or an Uber car, or a Lyft car. My building has thirty-two units, sixteen parking spaces, and they jacked the rate up so much that the parking lot used to be full, and now it's about half-full, but I don't know where people live, park. But I would like to see some contextual retail in the building. I do believe that we have to move forward in certain neighborhoods. I like buildings that kind of mirror or fit in with the context of the neighborhood, even though they might look different architecturally or different bulk-wise, but I think putting retail on the ground floor would go a long way towards making them more friendly and contextual with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Now, Jeff, if you want to address that, or, I mean, I could jump in and say, if the board would prefer this, we could propose to use the amenity space that's in the corner there as a retail commercial space. If that's, you know, the board believes that that's in a more appropriate use on the corner.
Yeah, I was just going to add that that space was designed so that it could be converted into a retail space, if that's something that made sense for it. That's why it has the exterior doors and all the windows and everything. It would be a great retail space if that's something, if that's the use that everyone thinks is appropriate for it, either now or in the future.
Thank you. To make that change, would we need to come up with a new application? I mean, is it substantially different than this application?
Doesn't sound that way, but what do you think, Chuck? If the space is pliable like that, so to speak, it can change from an amenity space to a commercial space?
If I can just chime in, if that's okay. In April, the planning board approved a restaurant overlay zone along Mallory Avenue. This corner would be in that. And so I don't know, it just hasn't gone to city council because of COVID, but it was actually sponsored by the councilwoman herself, who was in, was responding to her constituents. So whether or not a restaurant can go here, I don't know. Like, brings, the question to me is that if it's not even a part of this approval, I think that they could probably do a fit-out down the line anyway. So I don't know how you want to deal with that. This is a kind of a weird, because we're in between a planning board and a city council for the ordinance, so I'm not really sure how that would work.
Well, may I step in for a moment? I think the thing was just retail. It wasn't basically saying a restaurant. Because in any kind of retailer, a little store, a little supermarket, whatever, that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah, but I think, if you don't mind, Chairman, I think that even adding room for storefront or restaurant still doesn't take away the height and the amount of units for a neighborhood that is primarily structured as one and two families. Now, I understand, and I'm absolutely well-aware of what's happening in the area, absolutely clear. I understand that development is inevitable in every aspect, or every facet, or every area in the city. I understand that. But for this particular neighborhood, when you look down Mallory Avenue, there is nothing that will look like this building, nothing. There is nothing that will have forty units in five stories on Mallory Avenue, absolutely nothing. It is not, to me, right, and it's ultimately up to the entire board to decide, but it is not, to me, an appropriate use of space in terms of the height and the amount of units on Mallory Avenue. But, that's me.
Okay. No, I, you know, you know more about the immediate area than, you know, as someone who lives there than, you know, someone like me that doesn't even live in the immediate area. So I think that that's, you know, something that we should all take into account. And I think we probably should have some discussion before we vote. I just didn't know, you know, kind of, we want to hear from staff on this point. And I guess I'm surprised that with a project of this magnitude and this location, that we didn't hear more from the community. So I don't know what, that's a reflection of one way or the other.
Well, maybe Mr. Harrington can answer that. Is that a reflection that you spoke to the community and the councilperson? What did they say about this project?
Yeah, we met with the councilwoman a few times on this, and she coordinated a community Zoom meetings. So, you know, people did, did show up for that, but that, you know, that not, you know, that's, I can't, I can't, you know, make people show up for it, but we did, we distributed it on social media, and we presented it.
Yeah, I think the attendance for those Zoom meetings were very minimal. And, yeah, I did see it on social media. I was unable to see it, I mean, attend, but I'm not sure. And the council did, she did what she was supposed to do. She got it out there as best as she could. It was kind of last minute. I think I seen it the same day. The meeting was scheduled the same day. Well, the notice was put out there on social media the same day of the meeting, right? Because I think it was a conflict between Mr. Harrington and scheduling the meeting and everything like that. I think it was a conflict because of the weather and every other different situations. But I seen it the same day it was scheduled.
Well, we had been, we had been requesting a meeting for a couple of months, and, you know, with everything going on, and I guess the councilwoman's, you know, busy schedule as well, we advised her we were, you know, looking to be on this meeting, and then she coordinated a meeting. And then she, I think the best, the best thing she had at first was, maybe it might have been last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, that's when we had the storm. So what we did is we canceled it ahead of time in anticipation that you might have had power outages, right, which happened. We rescheduled for Thursday. And that, there were still power outages in the area. A few people attended there. So we presented to those, those people that attended, but then we rescheduled it again for Monday, and we had another presentation. And at that time, there were another, I don't know, maybe six or seven people that attended that one, but, you know, we made our attempts to present as much as we could.
Does anybody know if there's a neighborhood association in that neighborhood? And if so, is there any, did anybody contact you, or did you reach out to them? I don't know.
Yeah, that's what, we went directly through the councilwoman, because we weren't sure of what the neighborhood association was. So we contacted her, and the meeting was done through her participation. She, she sent out the notices. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I still, I'd be interested to hear, you know, staff comments on this.
Okay, Cameron. So, well, firstly, the standard intro, I will ask that the applicant agree to the conditions stated in the staff report dated August 12th, 2020. Do you agree with those conditions?
Yes, we would.
Okay. Staff also heard the added eighth condition of bio-swells. We can explore where the most appropriate sites would be for those bio-swells. I think one on Virginia would be a good idea, given the water that would be coming down the hill. You could collect some of that before it hits some of the, you know, arterial drainage systems of Mallory, and then maybe some on Mallory as well, but those are things for the signature plans we could examine. So that's the eighth condition. And then the ninth condition, which I don't think we came to a conclusion on, was whether we want that amenity space to be changed into a commercial space. Is that off the table now, or are we still examining that?
I guess, I mean, the applicant would defer to the board, if they think that that's a more appropriate use for the amenity space, we can, we can have that, or you can leave it as an option in as much as this may be a zone where you may have like a restaurant-cafe eventually in that space, because it will be built out for the possibility of the conversion.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I thought. All right, so we'll, we'll leave it at the eight conditions, and with the restaurant overlay zone, that gives some flexibility to make modifications to that space in the future. So firstly, to address the density, this would, in a planner's, you know, textbook, qualify as a transit-oriented development zone when you're within that quarter-mile radius of some type of transit node. So the density is something that would, would fit in with some planning 101. Now, also, the history of this thoroughfare is that it was actually a neighborhood commercial zone at one point in history. And that sort of is why you've got so many of, it's why you have so many of the mixed uses on the ground floor throughout Mallory. It certainly is, it's one of my favorite streets in Jersey City, and it certainly is a, you know, unique commercial corridor, some interesting thrift stores along there, some good vegan restaurants. And you definitely get more of the NJCU students that are utilizing and acting as, you know, consumers in that neighborhood. So the density is something that is not of chief concern to planning staff. You know, as far as the bulk of the building in regard to the C variances go, similarly, you know, this existing structure already has many coverage variances and setbacks. But to Mitchell's concerns regarding the height, it certainly doesn't meet the E6 variance criteria for fitting in within the context of the neighborhood. Now granted, if we consider the NC zone's height restrictions, in an NC zone, a five-story building would be permitted. And now you, this is not an NC zone. On this block, though, to the east is West Side Avenue, where we have NC. Now, it certainly is difficult grappling with the height, because it certainly will be out of context. But, you know, just circling back to the original TOD quality to this site, and it, it would be within a transit-oriented development circumference from a transit node. And for that reason, staff feels that this could be an appropriate build-out of the applicant's site. And with that, you know, Charles' testimony regarding all the other variances, staff feels that it covered all of our questions in the staff report, and the community's concerns were really impressive, and I think added a nice green element to this project. And having said that, staff recommends approval.
Okay. Cameron, if, and I understand that the restaurant overlay zone was, you know, kind of between planning and city council, did that have anything other than use? Did it have anything about height in this immediate area that would be a modification from where we are today?
No, no. No, I, I think though that in the master plan reexamination. The study's going to find that this is a corridor that could be looking for rezoning. You know, it's, like I said, it, it was an NC. I, I, I don't know where in the history of. Jersey City zoning, it got turned into an R one again, but this is certainly a, uh. An avenue that. Has a more of an NC. Vibe to it, if you want to call it.
So historically, it was an NC zone that was changed over at some point.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this point for staff, for? The applicant?
And I'd like to make a motion on approval for Z nineteen dash zero eight six with the staff recommendations, uh, conditions.
Well, are, are we gonna, do we want to make a decision on? Whether or not we want it to be, uh, like. Rich, is, are, are, is your, um, motion, uh, you know, on what use on the, the ground floor?
This is the thing with the over, you know, um, with the condition that it be part of the overlay that they already stated before. That is a part of the condition that it become a real.
Restaurant.
A restaurant or whatever amenity they may want to put there right now, you know. It's not necessarily, it said that they were going to put a restaurant. They just said that they would change it to, um, it could be like a little store or, you know, whatever. It was no, no mention that it was going to definitely become a restaurant, but with the possibility of the, uh. Passing of the restaurant zone that they could do that with the amenity of being coming to a, um. Pizza shop or whatever, a restaurant of some sort.
Okay, so i- is that? Agreeable or should we, you know, say what, what, you know, we're saying that is to the applicant? You know, in some clear way, like do we, or do we want to say that, that it has to be? You know, if they're giving us a choice, do we want to say on this application, either it's today and amenity space? But if this thing passes, it'll be retail space or committed restaurant retail use? Or are we saying, you know, we'd like this to be commercial use? You know, through the proposal, which it could be outfitted for.
No, I, I think we already stated that it would become a retail, some sort of retail spot. Commercial spot in that, instead of that amenity room already. I believe that was stated before. So that would be one that, you know, the condition that the amenity room be changed to, uh. Commercial real, you know. Whatever. And then it with the condition that it still has that open, um, door. With the restaurant overview comes into play, that could, they could make the change at that time.
And that would be acceptable that, yeah, if, you need, you know, when the restaurant overlay, uh, district is, is adopted, then. That space would be required to, uh, be converted to a use, uh, consistent with the restaurant overlay, which would be like a restaurant cafe. You know, eating place.
If you don't mind me asking again, and, and I forgot the architectural drawings, um, what, how big was that space?
Yeah, it's, uh.
It's, uh, six hundred and sixty-five square feet. Six hundred and sixty-five square feet total, about twenty-five by twenty-five. I can bring it up. I'm actually, let me bring it up.
No, that's not necessary. Oh, okay.
Oh, it was, it was right there. So this is it right here, about twenty-five by twenty-five on the corner. And we would remove this door and then probably add a door in the rear so that the tenant will be able to access the trash area.
Thank you.
Hi. So, I think we have.
I'm sorry. So are you clear what I was saying and that, that Mr. Harrington is agreeing upon?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say we, we, we have a motion pending. Does anyone want to second the motion or, um, or not?
I second to the motion.
Okay, all right, so Commissioner Brown?
Well, you're on mute, uh, Lenore.
Yeah, it's going back.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Um, I think I fully expressed. How I feel about this particular property and there's no disrespect to the, the, uh, architect or the planner. Or even the attorney. It's just, I just really feel that. This, this, uh, development is not inappropriate. Uh, doesn't have an appropriate space on Mallory Avenue. In terms of the design, or maybe not the design, but just in terms of the structure, in terms of the five stories. And the forty units, I think it's absolutely inappropriate for Mallory Avenue. And, um, so I'm gonna vote no on that.
Commissioner Jamie?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
I would like to, um. To make a comment about the staff, uh, report and I agree about what he said about Mallory and how this area is developing. I, I live a few blocks away from that area. And I, I see that, uh, uh, everything is changing there. And it's only one block away from West Side where there is a lot of building. Been built to the same design and the, the areas are changing. Uh, and I think I, i- it's, it's going to be a good addition to the area. The, the warehouses I saw and I, I'm glad they, they are doing something about it and my vote would be yes.
Okay, Commissioner McCormick?
Uh, yes, um, but you know what, as many of our fellow commissioners, I do live in that immediate area. Uh, I walk down that area a lot and we, uh, just recently, you know, I understand the Commissioner, um. Mitchell's status and, uh, concerns. But if you like, just blink an eye, walking down that area, that, that is like a eyesore. And to see an improvement of any type in any kind of neighborhood is a plus for the city and the residents of the area. I know, um, with all that building that is going on around that area right now, Clamont Avenue. There's like, these buildings are going up so high and fast. Um, and it wasn't NC at one time and it somehow became a R one. But you gotta understand, you know, it's towards the end of Mallory. And you're only about a block away from the big empty parking lot for the light rail station. And if you go down further to the end of Mallory, you have NJCU, which we approved not too long ago. Building a big building right there at the end of Mallory. So with that, you know, I respect my fellow Commissioner, uh, Mitchell and his concerns about the neighbor, uh. This height and everything, but, um, I would just have to say I vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner Rothman?
This is why we get paid the big bucks to make the hard decisions. Mr. Mitchell and, and a couple of members of the public opened up some very good points. I really didn't want to throw a monkey wrench into this whole thing. I, I like the idea that, uh, we're giving the. The project the option of community space or something else. My biggest concern is in parking. My biggest concern is, is it going to create longer waiting lines at car mines? Thank you, Rich. So I vote yes.
Okay, and Chairman Jacobs?
I mean, I thi- I think that there's, uh, a, a lot, a lot of things I like about this project. I like that, that, um, they have the flexibility on the ground floor. I think that it's good that they have. You know, thinking about where we want to be moving, um, forward. In the area and I'd love to see what, what'll happen with, with the restaurant area. I, I was a little concerned that, that there was very few people that, that spoke from the public. Um, I would have liked to have, you know, I, I, i- if the councilwoman was on board. Some, some type of statement or something from the immediate community a- about that. So it, it just, it seemed a little suspicious to me on, on, on a relatively large scale project. In this particular neighborhood, um, that we didn't have that. So while, while I like the project, I, I, I'm going to vote no. O- only so that I, I. I'm trying to be mindful that, that there may be other people who didn't have an opportunity to, um, have their voice heard.
Okay, um, motion carries five in favor, two against with conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
So, uh. We have a few resolutions to memorialize. Shall we do that now?
Sure.
Bridgette is, uh, case Z nineteen dash zero four nine. The applicant was eleven Beacon Avenue LLC. The address was eleven Beacon Avenue. Uh, that was heard on December nineteenth. Present were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Rothman, Velardo. Shadid and Mitchell. That was an application for a minor site plan with a D and C variances. Uh, Lindsay, the, the resolution says it was, uh, six in favor, none opposed, but it's actually seven in favor, none opposed. So all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
And the next. The next three we can do together because they all occurred on July sixteenth. And they were all voted in favor of six in favor, none opposed. On July sixteenth. Present were Chairman Jacobs, Vice Chairman Donnelly, Commissioners McCormick, Rothman, Velardo and Shadid. So the first, uh, application was, uh, Sunsky, that's S U N S K Y LLC. A preliminary and major site plan approval with C and D variances. Six sixty-eight dash six sixty-seven Communipaw Avenue. That was case Z nineteen dash zero eight two. The next resolution, uh. I'll just spell it. It's S H U B H. Next word is L A X M I and then Jordan L S LLC. That's a preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variances. Eighty-seven dash eighty-nine Jordan Avenue. In that case was numbers Z nineteen dash zero eight three. The next resolution to memorialize the same date, same six commissioners. Joseph Castagna. Seventeen Wales Avenue. That's case Z twenty dash zero three one. That was an application for preliminary and major, uh, site plan approval with a C and D variance. So again, all those three cases were voted on, six in favor, none opposed. So we can just memorialize them all together. We memorialize them all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that would end it as far as that goes. I don't think there's any other business, right Lindsay? No other business. Okay, so we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Great. Okay.
Favor.
Aye. So we'll see you in, uh, two weeks, I guess, right?
Yeah, our next. Yeah, our next meeting is August twenty-seventh. It might be a bit of a longer agenda, but you know, just a reminder that the chairman, you have the ability to cut off the meeting starting at ten PM. Make that decision then if you want to carry the rest of the cases.
How many cases are there already for the twenty-seventh?
Uh, they might be closer to six on the agenda. Yeah. Or shorter, it's just.
It's almost in a, anyway, today, so.
Maybe we wish it started eight PM.
I mean, that might change. That might change. It's just a heads up.
Okay.
Thanks.
Justice goodbye for car mines.
Bye, everyone.
All right. Good night.